To order at 6:30 PM. If you all will please stand for the invocation led by Mr. Commissioner Bain and the Pledge of Allegiance led by myself.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the love that you give freely to us. We pray that you will guide us in our endeavors and give us wisdom and strength as we move forward with tonight's agenda. We pray for peace and prosperity in the world and will strive to be examples of how you would have us live. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Bain. Now for the roll call, Mr. English.
Commissioner Appicella, Commissioner McPherson, Commissioner Bain, Commissioner Venech, myself, Commissioner Boswell, Commissioner Randall, Madam Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. English. And now, any declarations of disqualification or disclosures that anyone would like to make for any item on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, now is the time we move on to the public presentations portion of tonight's meeting. So if anyone from the public is here that would like to talk about any item other than the items on the public hearing, and since there's quite the crowd, I'm going to go over, we're at the Dunkin' Donuts, the Cluster subdivision, and the mass drain field proposal. So if you're here to talk about those, you cannot come up at this time, you'll come to those public hearings, but if you're here to talk about any of the other items, you may come up at this time. You'll have three minutes to speak. When the green light comes on, please state your name, address, and the district that you reside. When the yellow light comes on, you have a minute, and when the red light comes on, your time is expired. Would anyone like to come down to speak?
My name is Lawrence Kimes. I'm speaking into the microphone, please. Sorry. My name is Lawrence Kimes. I'm property owner at 307 High Street in the Rock Hill District. This is in reference to the continued use, the use permit for 512 convenience store. I have no objections to the expansion itself, although looking at the plans from last month, it says that there's a six-foot fence on the Attachment Three, Page One, the six-foot wood screening fence all the way across the property line, and on Attachment Two, it says it's both seven feet and six feet tall. So I don't know whether there's an inconsistency or whether it's just my understanding of the plans. It also says that the wood fence is to go all the way across the property line. It does not. It only has 50 feet of my shared property line with the property. My property line is 193 point something feet. So that wood fence does not go the entire length of my property, which backs up to The fence itself does not come all the way down to the bottom. There's like a three-inch, six-inch gap below, a three-inch gap below, I think it is, and a lot of the trash from the asphalt pad, because it's right behind the dumpster area, comes under the fence and litters my yard. So I've got to maintain and clean the trash up. They're using a leaf blower within the last month, and I've got a lot of trash. Basically, we're hoping that that fence gets all put all the way across the property line, because it says that's the proposed plan, but it also says the existing plan is it's supposed to be all the way there. So I'm a little bit twuxed as what's going on with that. There's three lights that are out the front of the property line, adjacent to 610. Those lights are now LED. They shoot over the top of the building, and one of the lights, the one in the middle of the three, basically comes in by a couple of bedroom windows in my house, so it's real bright, almost like a football stadium at night. That's about all I can remember, think of right offhand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come down for the public presentations? Okay, seeing no one come down, I'm going to close tonight's public presentations portion of the meeting and move on to the public hearings. The first public hearing we have this evening is the reclassification and the conditional use permit for the Dunkin' Donuts on Route 17 and Melchers Drive. For this, we recognize Mr. Gooch for the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm Brian Gooch with Planning and Zoning. I'll be presenting the continued public hearing for Dunkin' Donuts at Route 17 and Melchers Drive. The request is for rezoning of 0.2 acre to B2 urban commercial for parcel 53B17 and a conditional use permit on 0.83 acre for a restaurant with drive-through on parcels 53B17 and 11. The zoning district is R1 suburban residential, B2 urban commercial, and it's also within the HC highway corridor overlay district. The applicant is Sam R. Shalaby with DCS, and this is in the George Washington District. Site is located on the north side of Warrington Road, approximately 500 feet southeast of Solomon Drive. The two parcels comprising the site are outlined in red. The smaller parcel is subject to the reclassification to B2, and both parcels are subject to the conditional use permit. Surrounding properties are zoned B2 to the northwest, R1 to the east, and M1 to the south. Property is cleared of trees and level. Majority of the larger parcel is within a 225-foot width Dominion power easement. I'll approximate that location. The property is current undeveloped apart from one single-family residential detached home, and the property abuts an Arby's Restaurant to the northwest, and single-family residential to the east, as well as a undeveloped parcel. Today's staff received a revised generalized development plan for the project. This has been provided to the Commission in the handout materials. The latest plan includes changes to the location of the dumpster and loading space, along with changes to buffer widths and landscaping arrangement. There have been several changes to the GDP since the public hearing in February. First of all, the building has been reduced from 1,737 square feet to 1,400 square feet, which reduced the required number of parking spaces to 21. The entrance from Route 17 has been shifted west and is now centered on the property line, and this more closely aligns with the existing entrance to Arby's. The interparcels connection to Arby's has been shifted closer to Route 17 and changed to an enter-only. This would provide easier access for trucks entering Arby's site and reduces the likelihood of traffic cutting through Arby's to access Dunkin' Donuts.
Mr. Gooch, real quickly, I have a question there. So now, if a truck, a tractor-trailer is traveling, what would that be, westbound, northbound? Can they get into this, to the Arby's still? Because I know that was a big concern from the Commission last time, is access from tractor-trailers to get into the Arby's site.
I believe they could. Previously, the plan had a 90-degree access directly across from the access to Dunkin' Donuts, so making that turn would have been more difficult. But now, since it's angled enter-only, I think they'd be able to make the turn. Loading space has been relocated to the southern end of the property. Due to Hcod requirements, the applicant would need to demonstrate that the loading space is adequately screened from Warrington Road. This would be verified at site plan review. And the dumpster has been relocated to the rear of the building. Here's a closer look at the GDP. Comments were made at the first public hearing regarding tractor-trailer parking for deliveries. A 12-by-25 loading space is shown as required by code. And again, that's here. There would likely not be adequate space for a tractor-trailer to enter the site and circle the building, particularly if there are vehicles in the drive-through lane. The applicant has consulted with a vendor who would make deliveries to the property, and they have indicated that all deliveries could be made via a box truck. The applicant has therefore agreed to a condition which prohibits tractor-trailers from making deliveries to the property. The condition has been added since the completion of the staff report. The latest conditions have been provided to the Commission in the handout materials. The applicant has received comments from Dominion Virginia Power regarding the proposed improvements within the 225-foot power easement that covers much of the property. There are height limitations to landscaping within the easement, and landscaping plan in the GDP has been revised to show only shrubs within the easement area. Again, that's, easement is here. Staff notes that shrubs will provide limited visual and noise screening beyond the proposed six-foot board-on-board fence that's proposed along the property line. The applicant has revised the plan, basically, so you can see that as you transition into the easement, the smaller vegetation is proposed, whereas to the south, they're showing trees, and that includes the landscaping along the frontage. They've revised the plan to indicate that they're able to provide the required number of plant units in the transitional buffer areas and other areas. Therefore, it's possible that an alternative compliance plan could be approved administratively to allow for the reduced buffer widths. Staff has not yet had the opportunity to formally review the landscape plan to determine if it meets all the requirements for alternative compliance.
And Brian, if it still doesn't, then what's the next step after that?
If it can't meet the requirements for alternative compliance, it would have to go to a departure of design standards, which would be approved or denied by the planning The architectural rendering has been modified since the February public hearing to reflect a new building concept introduced by Dunkin' Donuts. The new building concept is consistent with many of the neighborhood design standards recommendations, but does not improve compatibility with the styles and materials of the Falmouth area as recommended by staff. There have been revisions to the proffers and CUP conditions since February public hearing. The proffers have been revised to include a condition which was formerly in the conditional use permit that deals with construction of the turn lane and median along Warrington Road, and the conditional use permit has been revised to include language which would provide some flexibility in the location of the entrance to Dunkin' Donuts off of the shared travelway, and that was in response to some concerns expressed by Dominion as to if they need to go in there and make any improvements within their easement. They want some assurance that the site could still be viable.
Brian, I had seen a drawing that showed that alternative entrance. Do you have that as a display tonight, or?
I do not.
Could you go back to your, to the site plan for just a minute? Do you, did you see that drawing by any chance?
I did.
Okay. Can you just show us on there roughly where that would be?
So the revised entrance, if I recall, sort of came down like this. So you'd have the, this would be the two-way.
Right, right.
And I believe maybe this parking space was removed to allow for more turning here.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Thank you.
Also, a condition has been added, as I noted before, that prohibits deliveries via tractor-trailer. Staff notes the positives, as this is consistent with the comp plan recommendations for commercial development along major roadways, consistent with established development patterns, implements some of the recommendations from the VDOT Star's Route 17 study. Proffers help minimize impacts on the transportation network, and the building incorporates many of the recommendations of the NDS plan. Negatives are that low-lying vegetation within the power easement would result in greater visual noise impacts in certain areas, and the proposed building design does not incorporate the styles and materials of the Falmouth area. I am only staff is generally supportive of the application pursuant to Resolution R1835, but again, notes the planning restrictions within the power easement would limit the ability to buffer in some areas. And I'll take any questions.
Brian, I have a quick question. You mentioned alternative buffering methods. Can you give us just a couple of examples of what those might be?
So alternative compliance is basically, it's, it doesn't do anything as far as required plant units. You still have to provide what's required as far as plant units go, but it allows you to reduce the buffer width. So if you're able to show that you can sort of condense your landscaping plan into a more dense pattern into your narrower buffer widths, then it can be approved.
See, it seems to me that the issue is not the width of the buffer, it's the height of the trees, correct?
In some areas, yes, because of that Dominion power easement.
Right, so there's, there's no way, I mean, there are fencing, are there ways around that? Height versus width?
Potentially, as far as fencing goes, I imagine they could go higher within the easement, but I'm not positive. Maybe that's something the engineer could answer. Thank you.
Any other questions on the Commission? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Would the applicant like to come up and talk? Mr. Shalaby? Sure you have lots to say?
I have a few things.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and the members of the planning commission.
Just kidding.
Okay. My name is Sam R. Shalaby with Development Consulting Services and 159 Litchfield Boulevard in the Hartwood District. I guess, Brian kind of explained most of the big things. I just wanted to kind of recap a few of the critical parts. One thing I wanted to kind of go back to the origin. This is a very difficult site, and we understand that. It is, it is currently, or at least the applicant, or previously, it was zoned for and had a conditional use permit for a car repair and used car sales. So, you know, I don't think 17 needs another one of those. We've got plenty of those, and that's why we're trying to change it to something a little better. We've tried to accommodate, we've met with the staff numerous times. I'm sure Mr. Gooch here is tired of seeing me. I've talked to Mr. Bain. We've talked to all the rest of the staff many times. We've discussed with Arby's, trying to accommodate, or at least solve all the issues or concerns that everybody had, and we feel like we've done that to the most part. The biggest things is I know the easement, the Virginia Power, Dominion Power, they have a limitation of the size of the plants, because obviously, they don't want trees growing, and they have to go spend all the money to cut them, et cetera, and of course, falling down on power lines, we lose power, et cetera. So their requirement is to use low-lying shrubs. Again, when I say low-lying shrubs, most of these shrubs, if you look at their actual definitions, they grow to about 10 feet. So they're, you know, they're pretty, they can get pretty good size. We are using a fence, and the only residence, basically, that are next to us is the one east of this property, and we do have the fence, and in that area, we do, we can plant the larger trees, canopy trees, et cetera, so that's not an issue. The same thing in the back where there's a residence, we're also, that portion is outside the easement, most of it, so we can plant, again, larger trees. The only issue becomes is where the vacant lot is, and the reason it's vacant is because there is a power line easement, they can't build anything on it, and of course, the power line easement itself. So hopefully, that, we try to accommodate, we worked, we have the same number of plants, same number of units, the plant units, it's just a matter of the size of them, it's not going to be huge trees. With the dumpster, we relocated to the back, because there was some concern with Mr. Bain about the residence, noise, smell, et cetera, so we moved it to the back of the site. With regard to Arby's, there were some concerns about, again, that cross access. We removed the cross access. If you remember, we had the kind of a crosswalk, we removed that. We offset the entrances intentionally, so no one can come from their site into this site. We also angled it, as Mr. Gooch said, to allow for tractor-trailers to come in, and also prevent a vehicle to come in and have to do a really interesting maneuver to get it, to get back to the Dunkin'.
You said tractor-trailers. I heard that they said they were not.
No, no, on the Arby's site. Ours is no tractor-trailers. We were able to discuss and agreed with the vendor who supplies 9,000 Dunkin' Donuts nationwide, they're the main supplier, that they will only use box trucks here. Now, this was for Dunk, for Arby's. They wanted to make sure that they can still have access to the tractor-trailers. We made sure the angle allows for that. So, let's see if there's anything else.
I have a quick question, Mr. Shalaby. Do you guys have anything in there regarding downward lighting? I'm just dealing with this in another case where the lights are shining out toward the homes.
No, typically, it's down, again, there is a lighting ordinance for the county that we have to all meet. I mean, if it was older, I don't know if it's an older case or a newer one, but, you know, the, all the new ordinance requires us that we cannot exceed, I think, half-foot candle, you know, at the property line and beyond, and we cannot put anything. So obviously, we'll meet that. Yeah. The last thing I just want to say is, obviously, again, this parcel is, is difficult, there's no question there, but we feel this is a good use for it. I know Mr. Gooch also mentioned that we do not meet the requirements for the Falmouth. I know that was kind of a suggestion. Unfortunately, Dunkin' Donuts is a nationwide franchise, and, and a matter of fact, that the reason the plan changed is that they've been working on this plan for the last, you know, year, and we kept, because we've been working on this for almost a year and a half now, it kind of, they kept pushing back and saying, okay, you don't have to use a new plan, but obviously, since we kind of got delayed a little more, they kind of required it, but that is the standard, unfortunately, for Dunkin' Donuts. And again, the last thing I just want to mention with regard to tax revenue, just, again, everybody always says it's important, the property today, both the house and the property next to it, I think it's assessed at about 375,000, give or take a little bit, with no really opportunity to increase that whatsoever, because again, of the, of the way the site and the power line is. Obviously, with this, Dunkin' Donuts spends over a million and a half dollars on the building site, et cetera, and of course, meals taxes, so hopefully, that will be a plus and a benefit to the county. That's all I have to say. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Randall?
I have a couple of questions. Thanks for coming back. I know this is, this is a difficult at best. When you say box truck, what is this, what's the size of the box truck that you're talking about?
They usually run about 20 feet to 24 feet.
20 to 24 feet, okay. Have you been in contact with the resident to the southeast of that location?
Yes, we have, yes, and I thank you for bringing that up, because last, last, the resident on the right side, there was some concerns about the resident. We met with them, I think the county also reached out to them, and Mr. Bain reached out to them, so I think that we kind of hit them, all of us kind of, and, and they, they...
Leave me alone.
So to summarize their response?
Basically, they had no concerns. They said that they have no problem with it, you know, we tried to...
As long as you provide free donuts periodically.
Free donuts and coffee.
Free coffee, yeah, that would be good for lots of people.
They, they have a teenage son. I think they're going to be looking for part-time work.
They were looking for some work.
Whatever conditional use they require, that's between you and them.
Yeah, they indicated that they had no issues with it.
Okay, that's great. That's great. Now, again, about the design, you were somewhat, you were somewhat controlled about what you could do with the design, correct?
Correct.
Does Dunkin' Donuts have a variety of plans you can choose from, or was it pretty much thou shalt use this one?
Unfortunately, it is thou shalt use this one. In the past, they had some variety, but, you know, and recently, they're trying to unify their look with the drive-throughs, and if you've seen all the new ones, they all look the same, and this is the new, I guess, generation, and they're kind of, you have to use that, unfortunately.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I have one for staff.
Mr. Boswell?
I have one for staff.
Okay, oh, okay. I think that's it. Okay, that's good.
All right, well, thank you very much. I'll be close to Venech. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gooch?
Hey. We were just told that there's currently a conditional use permit on this property for a car lot.
That's correct. Used, or auto sales, I believe.
It's, am I, I misunderstood, there's two partials involved here with what we're zoning, is that correct? Is it?
Yes, so the, so the conditional use permit that currently exists is only for the larger parcel.
Only for the larger parcel. Do you have any idea what size car lot, how many cars? I think that goes along with the conditional use permit, how many they could put there?
I'm not positive. I have to go back and look, but I know just because of the site configuration, there's a pretty small footprint.
Okay, and do you know when that conditional use permit was issued? I was just kind of curious.
I can tell you if you can hold the...
Yeah, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Any other questions while we're waiting?
Don't overload them.
1998 Resolution R98322 allowed for an auto service facility in the area, and another conditional use permit was approved in 2002, R02493, which allowed for motor vehicle sales on the same parcel.
Has it ever been used for that purpose at all, either one?
No, sir.
Okay. And also, just for everybody's knowledge, who's going to enforce this not pulling tractor trailers into this Dunkin' Donuts? How is that enforced? Does that, I understand it's be complaint-based?
Most likely, yes.
So, you know, if, nobody's there to, I mean, there's no way to monitor that. That's, that's a nice proffer, but, you know, if they roll in there with a tractor-trailer and block up half the parking lot, there's no way, unless someone knows to complain, there's no way we can enforce it.
Unless, probably if there's a complaint, and if we're able to go out and monitor, if they typically come at a certain time.
Somebody has to complain to get that started, though.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm just really curious about this used car lot and used repair shop that's been zoned and, and it's never been used for that. I'd almost think that maybe the parcel's too small for that, but anyway, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Nope, okay. So now, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of this meeting. So if you would like to come down to the podium, please state your name, address, the district you reside. You'll have three minutes when the green light comes on, one minute yellow, red light comes on, your time has expired, so come on down.
Madam Chair, Chair, members of the planning commission, I'm Dan Wallace. I own and operate the Arby's 164 Warrington Road in the George Washington District. Me and my family have owned and operated the restaurant there for 41 years. I do appreciate the work the county has done in Dunkin' Donuts on looking at my issues. My concerns are still the same ones I've had from day one. Dunkin' Donuts states that they will have 1,500 cars coming to their lot a day. I'm saying that's 750 cars going north on 17, 750 cars going south on 17. 750 cars a day coming south trying to get into Dunkin' Donuts. We can have all the arrows we want. I have double arrows in my drive-through to go one direction, it doesn't make any difference. They go the other, they go anywhere they want. And you see Dunkin' Donuts sitting there, and you get that light, and you've not turned at that light, you've got to come through Arby's to get to Dunkin' Donuts, because they're putting a medium strip in front of where you can turn into Dunkin' Donuts. It's no right end, left end, excuse me. So they're going to be coming through my lot. We have 500 cars a day. My lot is not designed very well as it is right now to handle the 500 cars. How in the world is my lot going to handle 750 cars going south on Route 17 trying to get to Dunkin' Donuts to get a cup of coffee or donut? I have nothing against Dunkin' Donuts, but it's just too small. It's just not designed, our lots were not designed to have joint parking, our lots were not designed to have joint access between the two. It's just not, the flow is just not there. If you come to my lot during the lunch or late morning and look at the traffic that I have, and then picture 750 cars a day coming through there to get to a Dunkin' Donut, it's, it's not meant to happen that way. It's going to cause a problem. My other issue that I have, and I think it's no, no tractor-trailers to go, can get into Dunkin' Donuts. Well, they're going to have tractor-trailers. My equipment comes in on tractor-trailers, their equipment's going to come in on tractor-trailers, there are different items going to come in on tractor-trails. It's going to happen. When a tractor-trailer comes in, where is it going to go? It's going to go in my lot. If a tractor-trailer driver wants a cup of coffee and a, and a donut, where is he going to pull into? He's going to pull into my lot. We don't have joint parking. I don't want to be out there fussing at a driver, hey, you can't pull in, in my lot to run across the street over there to get a cup of coffee and a donut. It's not designed for that. But that's what's going to happen, and it's going to be a problem, and I'm going to be up here stomping and screaming and hollering that tractor-trails are pulling and using my parking lot to go to Dunkin' Donuts, and it's not designed for that. But that's my concerns. Like I said, I think they'd be a good neighbor, they run a good operation, there's no doubt about that. I just don't think the in and out is right there. I know they have worked, they've done everything they can. It's just with the size of that lot, it's just not made for that. I appreciate y'all's time, and thank you for my consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come down? Okay, seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing on the reclassification and conditional use permit for Dunkin' Donuts and give the applicant a chance to come up and address any of the public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to the, the traffic study that we ran was run on a larger building. As Mr. Gooch mentioned earlier, we had a larger building, and we redesigned it to shrink it down, and basically, the 1,500 cars a day, if, in the traffic, transportation, it said that is the, at the highest volume, so we don't anticipate that that would be the case. I'm sure Duncan would hope it would be the case, because again, that's, means business as well. But the, the key is, we've, we've tried to, you know, I agree, there's, you know, people driving, you know, I've seen people drive on roads, you know, in the wrong direction, completely backwards. I mean, I understand that, but we can't unfortunately, design everything and plan everything for every odd person that does something wrong. In this case... In this case, we've angled the parking, or at least the entrance, to make sure that, you know, people will not be able to do it, it makes no sense, if someone's traveling on 17, when they have a nice entrance, why would they go through the parking lot, or pass the entrance, go through the parking lot of Arby's, do a odd turn, go a one-way traffic to go in, go back again, a left turn to get back into entrance? We try to make it as cumbersome as possible to avoid that, and I think that is the case. With regard to tractor-trailers, again, I agree, you know, unless someone's out there standing, but that happens in everything in the county, when you put rules and there's proffers, unfortunately, you know, you can't have someone to police every minute, it's a matter of, we understand, and Duncan understands, if we violate the proffer or the condition and we get caught, that could, we could risk losing the whole thing. So trust me, that's not something of someone's worth, or willing to risk a million and a half dollar investment because a tractor-trailer. That's why we got the commitment from the main vendor, which again, they supply 9,000 Dunkin' Donuts, and they said, yes, we do it in all the circumstances, for example, Washington DC, New York City, those places, we understand you can't get a tractor-trailer, so they use the box trucks. And again, if there is a complaint, I would hope that Mr. Wallace will bring it up to Duncan, and they'll, they'll address that. Now, the person that wants to stop for a cup of coffee, or, I don't know, that's, I don't know what to say about that, I mean, I hope that they would not, you know, use that. There is another Duncan down on 17, further down, that they might be able, the truck drivers will know, they probably use that, but unfortunately, I don't know how to address that.
Mr. Shelby, really quickly, I have a question. So I'm confused how a car will come into Arby's, because didn't you guys close off the inner parcel connector? Can you give them the computer, Jeff?
Yes, if, is this thing, is working? Okay, basically, I'm going to kind of draw, if a car's driving this way, they will basically come in, and this will be the entrance they will take.
Okay.
If they, for some reason, you know, don't take that, which again, obviously being the labeled entrance and right there, they'll have to go this way, come into this entrance, come this way, come this way, go against traffic, come back, and then come at the, go in here.
And that's an in-only, though, correct?
That's an in-only.
And that'll be really narrow.
So they have, it's narrow, it's one-way, it has signs, do not enter one-way, so for someone to do that, obviously, like I said, that's not a likelihood the case, so.
And I'm just, in my mind, I go to Chick-fil-A a lot, on 610, and there's, and there's that one, and they, they just redesigned their parking lot to do in-only, so it's kind of the opposite.
Correct.
But I know every time I go to turn, I almost put my turn signal on to turn, I'm like, nope, can't do it, and it doesn't seem like they've had problems with wrongs, because they've made it narrow and they put the do-not center.
Correct, and this is exactly what we did, is, because again, the vehicle's coming, it's going to have signs, there's a sign that says, do not enter one-way, there's obviously the arrows on the ground.
And if they did that, like what, so they could go into that other exit, and then they would go out to Melcher's Drive, right? Where's the exit on, out of Arby's?
Out of Arby's, I mean, Arby's has several entrances-
In the back.
In the back is back through here. I mean, they'll go straight-
So they could drive there and then go around Melcher's to get there.
Correct, go to Melcher's, come back around, or obviously, go around the parking lot and come back, there's another entrance further-
Off of, on, off of 17, there's Melcher's Drive at the light.
There's an entrance here, and there's an entrance further down on 17.
Okay.
Correct, near the traffic light.
So, yeah, no, I was just trying to visualize it in my head.
Yeah, I just want to point something out, and I wished I had that little blue thing he's got, but if you're coming in off of 17, if I'm driving a tractor and trailer, because I drive a large truck, over, over the 26-foot box truck that they might be using at the deliveries to the, to the donut shop, but anyway, if you come in and make the right off 17, if I'm driving a tractor and trailer and I want a donut, I'm going to look the situation over pretty quick, and what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go right into the Arby's parking lot, and I'm going to ease on down here to those red-marked parking spaces, because there's probably not going to be a lot of cars parked there, and I'm going to stretch my truck across there, and I'm going to get out and I'm going to walk over to this Dunkin' Donuts and get my donut, and I'm going to tie up about 12 of those spaces, and that's what I would do, because there's no way you could get in there with a large truck. This, in my opinion, is, site is not big enough for what we're getting ready to talk about here, but that, as a truck driver, that's what I would do, and I think a lot of that's going to happen, and that's why the gentleman with Arby's is not pleased right now.
And I drive a truck and a trailer with my horses in it, and I always look for the path of least resistance, too, but what I would do, because I'm a terrible driver, is I would drive and turn on, at the light, and go park on Melcher's, and walk my happy little heiny all the way down to Melcher's.
And that's, I think that's, that's more likely a case, that someone might, might come in here, park, park right here, run, get their donuts, and go, and that's, that's like, I don't think-
Because then I could just leave right out of there, because I always am looking, am I going to get jackknifed somewhere?
Because, because again, exactly, and there is another Dunkin' Donuts, like I said, on the other side of 17, that does have larger parking lot access.
So you're a better driver than me, Roy. Yeah.
No, no, and I understand that, you know, again-
You forget about the donut, and just keep going.
You know, again, there's a reality, when people pull in, they're going to see that there's not enough room to maneuver and everything else, and like, you know, you know-
Or I'll just drive over all the curbs and brush it.
I got a question, Mr. Shelby, the, the people that are building this one, are they, do they own the Dunkin' Donuts further down?
Yes, on those sides of 17.
So, what is the, what is the traffic flow for that one down there? What is, what is the-
Do you guys, I think what we looked, it was 500?
So they get 500 down?
I think it was 550 vehicles a day.
Okay, and I got a question from Mr. Wallace, if he doesn't mind. Mr. Wallace, when you have deliveries, you have tractor-trailers coming for your delivery, correct? What's the issue that you had? Do you see any issues when they come in? I'm sure you do, or how do they, at what time do they come in, and how do they come?
We've had a point, we've had to make our deliveries come in, night deliveries now, they come in in the middle of the night, so they can come in-
Because of the traffic.
Through that back entrance right there, they pull up, they unload, and then they get out of there.
Okay, this is going to-
But when they come in, like you said, they're going to take up 15 parking spots across the back.
Okay.
And, and I don't, I'm not, can't be out there fussing at a truck driver pulling in there with a trailer or anything else, taking up 15 parking spots to run over to get a cup of coffee.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
That's all I had to, thank you.
We just broke protocol a little bit, so bear with us.
I know, I'm sorry, but I had to ask him a question. All right, that's all I have.
Okay, did, did you have a question, Mr. McPherson?
I did, just quickly, using your magic blue pen, how do you anticipate traffic from southbound 17 getting into your Dunkin' Donuts? You seen how they could, two ways they could get in from northbound?
Correct, they will get, they will come to Melcher's, they will have to take the traffic light, take a left on the traffic light, come to Melcher's and come in from here.
Okay, do you think that's realistic, though? Are they going to know that they have to turn on Melcher's to get to the Dunkin' Donuts? Because you don't see that median when you're, you know, until you come up on it.
I understand, but the other thing, well, if not, they're going to, but once they realize, they'll be at the median, and that's the reason that they'll have to come up somewhere further down, take a U-turn and come back.
That's my worry, is the U-turn, okay.
Well, I'm saying, I'm assuming somewhere, but I'm saying, but that's, I would think of most people, because of how difficult everything, they'd probably just keep going. I mean, I understand they like donuts, but, you know, they'll learn next time to come, come from Melcher's, because, and that's the reason why we met with VDOT, they're the ones that specified that length, because they figured out, you know, it's enough to turn, no one's going to be able to cross in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just, one thing in the back of my mind, and maybe Brian can clarify, I recall something about VDOT is eventually going to have that median all the way up to the stoplight?
That's what the VDOT Star's study is showing, yes.
Okay, is there any idea of the timing on that?
No, there's not, it's not a funded project.
Not funded yet, okay.
We're building the first portion.
Twenty years from VDOT, doesn't it?
I think, I think one of the things they have, but there's no funding, they want, I guess, as people develop or whatever, they'll end up building it, that's why we're building the first portion.
Any other questions?
Let me, let me follow on with that, then, is there any opportunity that the applicant could extend that median offer to extend it, would, and that would-
If I may answer that, we've had discussion with VDOT, obviously there's a cost, but also, the reason we kept it there was because of Arby's.
Yeah, I see them shaking their head, no.
Because we told, yeah, the VDOT, VDOT wanted us-
That's the book of death to you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, VDOT wanted us originally to go to the traffic light, and then, and in our discussions with them, we said, wait a minute, we don't mind impacting our site, but we didn't want to do any more impact on, on Arby's, so that's why we left it there.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Randall.
I saw, I've seen in the plans that we got tonight, where you want to put all your signs, is there some feasibility to put in a sign outside, or, I'm sorry, out by the intersection, that would allow people to understand that if they want to get into Dunkin' Donuts going south, that they need to turn at the light? Is there a-
I mean, obviously, we wouldn't mind doing it, we'd have to kind of check with the staff and with Arby's.
There are some logistics that would be associated with that.
Yeah, we can absolutely do something, yeah, I mean, if it's, we can get everybody to agree to it, we can definitely put a small sign with a directional arrow or something.
Absolutely, absolutely, I mean, you know, to Mr. Wallace's point, obviously, we, we want to minimize the impact to his business as much as possible.
Sure, absolutely.
And short of spike strips going one-way, you know, there's really no way we can do that, but if you, if you make it as available as possible, it won't be long before people realize that, all right, I'm not going to go against traffic, I, you know, the best way to do it is to make a right, right, left at the light, make a right at Melcher's, and then, there I am.
Yeah, we can definitely, you know, we'd be glad to do that, we just have to work the logistics with staff and Mr. Wallace to put some sign with the direction arrow.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Okay, are we sure, no more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll bring it back to the commission. Mr. Bain, this is in your district.
Yes, Madam Chairman, as has been, as has been said several times, I and the staff, county staff, met numerous times with the applicant and with Arby's. This is a terrible site, but I think that the applicant has gone to great lengths to try and address all of the problems that we have raised, all the issues, there's nothing they can do about that power line easement, and unfortunately, traffic movement is always going to be a problem on Route 17, going both north and south. But I think, I think in, in retrospect, there's really not much else that could be done with this site for, for pretty much any type of use, other than something like the car lot, so this is about the best that we're going to get, and for that reason, I think I'm going to make a motion, first, that we approve the rezoning of the one lot, and then I'll make a second motion, I guess I have to do it separately, or-
Do it separate, okay.
Do separately.
All right, so the first, the first motion will be to approve the reclassification of Dunkin' Donuts on Route 17 in Melcher's Drive, by Mr. Bain, do we have a second? Do we have a second, anyone?
I'll second.
Mr. McPherson, second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second by Mr. McPherson, any discussion, Mr. Bain?
No.
Okay, Mr. McPherson?
No.
All right, anyone else want to discuss, Mr. Appicello?
Madam Chairman, I just want to thank the applicant and Mr. Bain for working to resolve most of the issues. I understand that the owner of the Arby's still has some unresolved issues, I'm not sure that we'd be able to get to a fix that would be satisfactory. For me, one of those important issues was the fix related to the tractor-trailer concerns that I raised, so it is not a perfect site, as Mr. Bain said, but we might get something else there that may be less palatable and more impactful, so for those reasons, I'm going to support the motion.
Any other comments by anyone? Okay, so now, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, I'm sorry, Mr. Boswell, go ahead.
I can't support this, the site isn't big enough, it's going to impact Mr. Wallace's business, he's been there 41 years, way more than what some other things might, the car lot was brought up, it's been zoned for a car lot since 2002, I would venture to say that if no one has put one there in 16 years, maybe it's not big enough for the car lot that it's zoned for either, but either way, I can't support this, it's just not big enough, and I'm not going to support it, thanks.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Boswell, anyone else? Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Harvey?
For staff's benefit, Mr. Bain, was the motion for approval of the reclassification with the proffers as presented by the applicant tonight?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, excellent, okay, so we're voting to approve the reclassification with the new proffers presented this evening. Okay, the motion passes five to two, now on to item number two, which is the conditional use permit for Dunkin' Donuts, Mr. Bain?
Yes, ma'am, I also would like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit with the additional condition that was specified tonight concerning tractor-trailer limitations on the site.
Second?
I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Bain, second by Mr. McPherson, any comment, Mr. Bain?
No.
Mr. McPherson?
No.
Anyone else?
Yes.
I have a quick comment. You know, this is one of those difficult decisions that you make, sitting up here, understanding that there's a decision, that there's interest on both sides, this has impacts on a lot of people, and I don't look at those lightly, but to the point that's been made, I'm not sure that Mr. Wallace would rather have a used car lot out of there, which is the only other option that they have for that land. Now, to the point that's been made, is it's been 15 years, do we think we're going to get one? We may not, but it is zoned for that, there is a conditional use permit that allows that, and if they started building it tomorrow with a used car lot, there may be a thought that we would rather have a Dunkin' Donuts. Do I think that there's some things that you can do, Mr. Wallace, on your property to make sure that it minimizes the traffic going backwards through that? I do, you know, that's on you to make sure that you can minimize that. Do we have control over the drivers? This is Stafford County, I, I don't know what more you can do, rather than putting a, excuse me, a sign out by the, by the intersection to try to direct traffic around, but I think it's a good use for the lot, I know it doesn't have the right size that you would, that we would want, but I do think there is some effort to, to meet the requirements and to provide something to the county that, that we need, rather than another, to your point, another used car lot on 17. So for that reason, I'm going to approve it.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, please vote for the conditional use permit for the Dunkin' Donuts on Route 17. Okay, the motion passes five to two, thank you guys very much. And I neglected at the beginning of the meeting to ask for a motion to, to make a change to the agenda, and so Mr. Wazniewski has informed me that I can do that now, I can ask for a motion to change the agenda, to add a closed session after the new business and prior to the planning director's report. Doesn't anyone want to motion for that?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Second? Okay, a motion by Mr. Appicello, a second by Mr. English. Please vote. Okay, the motion passes seven zero. So now we're going to move on to item number three on the agenda, amendment to the Stafford County Comprehensive Plan, Cluster Subdivision Areas. And for this, we recognize Mr. Mike Zaraf.
If I could have the computer, please? Okay, good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Mike Zaraf, the Planning and Zoning Department. This item is a proposed amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for Cluster Subdivisions. The request would amend the comp plan to define locations where cluster subdivisions would be recommended. It would modify Chapter Three of the plan, that's the Land Use Plan chapter, to add a new sub, subchapter entitled Section 3.9, Cluster Subdivision Areas. And in that section, add a new map entitled Figure 3.9, Cluster Subdivision Areas. This is the proposed Cluster Subdivision Area Map. The areas recommended for cluster development include both the yellow and orange shaded areas on the map. The different shading does reflect portions inside the urban service area, that's the yellow shading, and the portions outside of the urban service area are in the orange shading. The areas in white are outside of the defined area where cluster subdivisions, in those areas, cluster subdivisions would not be recommended. So I want to take a moment to review the different steps in the process that the county's undergoing to review cluster development standards. There are essentially three phases that we're working through. Phase one is complete on March 20th. The county board amended the zoning ordinance to adopt a close, Cluster Subdivision Area Map as part of the zoning ordinance. The map identifies limited areas where cluster subdivision design standards are permitted in the county, and that map basically replicates the map you're considering tonight. Phase two, that's ongoing. On March 20th also, the board referred to the Planning Commission limited amendments of the comp plan and zoning ordinance. On March 28th, the Planning Commission was notified of this referral, and at that meeting, you chose to divide, divide the referral, initiate the, the hearing to amend the comp plan to add the Cluster Subdivision Area Map. This is the step where we are, where we are now in the process. Also, at that same meeting, the remaining part of the referral, the, the commission appointed a Cluster Development Committee, and they reviewed and considered modifications to the remainder of the, of the referral materials. Then, on, at your last meeting on April 11th, the committee provided recommendations to the full, full Planning Commission, full commission accepted the adjustments from the committee, and the Planning Commission initiated a public hearing on May 9th for the remainder of the Phase Two portion of the effort. And then Phase Three, this is upcoming on April 17th, the board approved another referral requesting the Planning Commission conduct a, a full comprehensive review of cluster regulations and to develop modifications to the cluster ordinance and consider adjustments to the Cluster Subdivision Map as the county is going through that effort. It's, the effort is intended to address the full list of concerns that the board has with cluster subdivisions, and that effort's expected to take nine to 12 months. So back to the issue at hand and the evaluation regarding kind of the area limits, the map and Cluster Subdivision Area Limits are identical to the map adopted by the board as part of the zoning ordinance. Then with minimum area requirements, the proposed map that you have is in accordance with the state code requirements that cluster development regulations be applicable to 40 percent, a minimum of 40 percent of the unimproved land in residential and agricultural zone districts in the county. For the purpose of designating these areas, unimproved land does include land without a dwelling or taxable structure and parcels of two or more acres in size. It also excludes land that's owned or controlled by the county, state, or federal government, also excludes land subject to conservation easements, and also unimproved lands that were part of dedicated open space areas of subdivisions. Looking at location issues, this proposal would address some long-term concerns for the viability of private wells and septic systems on smaller lots in more condensed areas. Development outside of the urban service area is expected to, to be more self-sustaining with the use of private wells and septic systems. Locating cluster development near the urban service area could potentially allow for access to public utilities if homeowners experience system failures in the future. Also, this would encourage cluster developments closer to other critical services such as public safety. On the issue of, of unimproved versus improved land, the, the plan amendment clarifies that cluster development may occur on improved land and unimproved land in the defined areas, assuming conformance with the cluster development standards. The identification of unimproved land was mainly for the sole purpose of ensuring that the area we identified is in, is in compliance with the state code. Staff does recommend approval of this comp plan amendment. It provides an effective means of growth management, focusing more intense development, and closer proximity to public facilities and services. And I'll take any questions at this time.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes. Concerning the 40 percent, is that a, maybe this isn't the right term, is that a rolling percentage as land within the current map area develops? Do we then have to expand the cluster development area to continue making it 40 percent of undeveloped land? Or is it a one-time assessment?
Not, well, yeah, basically, it should be at the time of approval. You should make sure that that 40 percent number is met. It, it definitely is going to be a number that's going to change over time as, as land develops and, and changes character, and ownership changes as well. And so in this circumstance, as this is an adjustment to the Comprehensive Plan, the chance to then reevaluate that would be during, you know, a five-year update, which the state code recommends and requires the county reevaluate the Comprehensive Plan every five years.
And, and Mr. Bain, just to clarify, as time goes along, and as Mr. Zaraf was saying, more land gets developed, that means there's less undeveloped property to consider towards that 40 percent. So what would likely happen is your area where you could do cluster would actually reduce over time.
Any other questions?
I do have one question. Just for clarification, the map that we're looking at was one of three maps that the Board of Supervisors took assessment of in order to determine which map they wanted to approve. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, there, that, that was as part of the
As part of their effort.
The zoning ordinance change, yes.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that the map that we're currently looking at has a, rather than a 40 percent minimum, it has a 47 percent undeveloped land percentage versus the 40 percent minimum. Is that, is that correct as well?
Well, that, that figure was provided early on when the, the maps were first prepared. We did have to, we did discover that there were some duplicates of some properties, and so we reevaluated that.
What's the overall percentage?
And it's a little, it's, it's closer to, sound closer to 40, it's maybe around 42 percent or so.
Okay, all right.
Approximately.
Thank you.
Mike, this was sent down to us. We couldn't make any adjustments to the map.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Zaraf. So now we'll move on to the public hearing portion for this item. So if anyone in the crowd would like to come down and speak, please state your name, address, and the district that you reside. When the green light comes on, you have three minutes. Yellow light means one minute, red light is your time has expired. Would anyone like to come down? Okay, seeing no one rushing the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Do we have any additional questions for Mr. Zaraf? All right, so what would we like to do with this item for today?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, send a recommendation of approval to the Board of the addition amendment to the Stafford County Comprehensive Plan with Figure 3.9 and associated.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Randall to approve the Comprehensive Plan, Cluster Subdivision Area Map, and a second by Mr. English. Mr. Randall, any comment?
I have no further comments, thank you.
Mr. English?
No, ma'am.
Anyone else? Nope, seeing none, then go ahead and let's take a vote. I did push the button, I promise. Okay, motion passes six to one. All right, if they could all be that quick, that would be great. Item number four on the agenda, Amendment to the Subdivision Ordinance, O-18-17. For this, we recognize, I think, Mr. Zaraf, oh, Ms. Hornung.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission, excuse me. The proposed ordinance, O-18-17, is for the Planning Commission to consider Section 22-118, Water and Sewer, to eliminate community sewage disposal systems from being classified and permitted as onsite sewage systems for new subdivisions. The, currently, the county subdivision ordinance allows for the use of community onsite sewage systems or mass drain fields, and mass drain fields meaning a connection of more than at least three or more single-family dwellings attached or detached. And these are private sewage treatment works that would process a septic tank effluent for more than the three single-family attached, detached dwellings. And they're typically located in open space areas, easements through those open space areas to the lots in that subdivision, and the open space parcels would be owned by homeowners association. The Utilities Commission and Utilities Department express concern over the long-term maintenance of these type, excuse me, of systems where supporting residential uses because since these mass drain fields are privately maintained, it's possible that the HOA could default, and then the responsibility of maintenance of that community drain field system would be left up to the residents in that subdivision. And the county would not have authority or financial means to repair those systems. This, excuse me, the, the issue was discussed, excuse me, at the March 6 meeting of the Board's Community Economic Development Committee, and because of those concerns, they recommended that the board require that drain field be on the property it serves for the new subdivisions, and that easements to off-site mass drain field systems would no longer be permitted. Currently, we do not allow individual drain fields to have easements on other properties. Also, the CEDC recommended to clarify the capacity and design requirements for these onsite systems. So what I'd like to do is go through the ordinance and specify those items that are recommended to be changed. In 22-118 of Water and Sewer, section of the subdivision ordinance, section four, onsite sewage disposal systems, the or community would be stricken, and the statement would actually refer to onsite sewage disposal systems. Disposal would be added. The remaining paragraph would remain the same. Section B of that same, section number four, the onsite sewage disposal systems would have individual written before it. So it would read, "All individual onsite sewage disposal systems shall be designed and constructed in accordance with the Code of Virginia in 1950 as amended." Paragraph C is the one that is amended the most, would also continue to add individual prior to onsite sewage, and then include the word disposal system, because we're discussing onsite sewage disposal systems, which also coincides to state code and how those systems are referred to. Excuse me. "These systems would be proposed to serve an individual lot in residential subdivision comprised of single-family detached homes, shall be at least 150 gallons per day, per bedroom." Per was added prior to bedroom. And then the next sentence, which I will read, is the one that has been, been amended to be removed. "A community onsite disposal system shall be defined as a treatment works that serves more than three attached or detached single-family dwellings with a combined average daily sewage flow greater than 1,000 gallons per day, or a structure with an average daily sewage flow in excess of 1,000 gallons per day." An additional sentence to be removed as well is, "The minimum design capacity for community onsite sewage system shall be at least 300 gallons per day per dwelling unit on a peak-flow basis. In all cases, a reserve area in accordance with subsection 4D below shall also be provided for each lot or community system." Those three sentences would be removed, which basically removes the ability to allow a community mass drain field. And then the remaining paragraph would stay the same. "Alternative design capacity may be required depending on the proposed use or intensity of use, as determined by the Virginia Department of Health. Stafford County will not accept conditional permits for systems that do not meet these minimum capacity requirements." And further, on subsection D, paragraph D would also remove or community and add disposal, so it would say individual onsite sewage disposal system. Paragraph E also would replace non-community with individual throughout the paragraph, and that no easements shall be permitted for individual onsite sewage disposal systems to be located off-site. This will ensure that there'll be no easements for any drain fields off-site from the lot that it would serve. Excuse me. "And boundary line adjustments shall not reduce or give away absorption capacity." So the word "shall not" has been added. And the remaining paragraphs of F and G will stay the same. So basically, the, the section of the subdivision ordinance would remove the ability to allow community drain field systems, clarify that they are individual, and it's onsite sewage disposal, systems. The resolution referred to you, 1876, from the Board of Supervisors, referred these amendments to you through the ordinance 18-17 to remove these references. You also have included in your packet the resolution 1876 that included references of amendments to the Utilities Ordinance, but the Utilities Commission are the ones that will review the ordinance O-18-18 to make those changes. And the ordinance O-18-17 is ready for your consideration for those amendments to remove the community drain field. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. McPherson?
So it's, my understanding that just to boil all that down to one sentence, is it O-8, O-18-17 is to get rid of mass drain fields and community drain fields? Is that even allowed by Virginia Code 15 dot 2 dash 2157 I'm looking at? States that a locality cannot prohibit the use of alternative drain fields? Does mass drain field count as alternative drain field?
I don't believe so. But maybe Mr. Wizniewski can assist.
The proposed ordinance changes comply with state law. That protection is for onsite systems.
Alternative onsite systems?
That's correct.
So what that means is if you have a septic system, and it goes bad, and you have an alternative site, the county can't regulate that alternative site?
I'm sure the Planning and Zoning Staff could speak more to the types of systems, but an alternative onsite system is a, I guess you could call it a more advanced system over a conventional septic system. It's not in reference to an alternative site.
Gotcha. So it's the alternative system.
It's something like a composting toilet.
Yeah, like the newer, yeah, I know what you're talking about, the newer ones. That can be uphill versus, you know, your field has to be downhill. Yeah, you pump it up. What do they call those, Jeff?
Yes, Madam Chairman, many times they have pre-treatment requirements for the alternative systems, rather than a conventional septic tank and, and drain field system.
Yep.
To get to make it clear with Mr. McPherson's point, as he read the code, and it is correct with regard to onsite systems, we cannot prohibit those. But in the case of a community drain field, it's an off-site system. So that's the distinction.
Any other questions?
Ms. Hornung, this kind of code is going to protect pretty much the homeowners. Reason we're doing this is another thing, too, because like you said before, if it fails, HOA doesn't take care of it, it's back on the residence, and then, then the county can't help out. So this is more of a protection for this, for a new resident, correct?
That is correct.
When we're doing this.
And this is for systems that serve more than three?
Understood. Have we had any issues that you know of that's, that these drain fields have collapsed or done something like this, or is it to bring this on, or is it just?
I believe there was one for a ma, mass drain field for a mobile home park that has failed.
Okay.
And currently, we have one cluster subdivision that has had a community drain field approved.
Right.
That was in discussion with the Health Department this week. That's the only one for a newer subdivision. And I, I know that we have maybe another commercial, a community drain field approved, maybe for, oh, for campgrounds. They have them sometimes for campgrounds.
So basically, when, as it is right now, it's up to the HOA to make sure that this thing's maintained, or, or emptied, or whatever, like every five years, or whatever, less than that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I think there was another community drain field that failed, or maybe it was multiple individuals, I'm not sure, but it was off of Onville Road, because I remember when I first got put on the Planning Commission, a developer came to us because he got an environmental study that said he would have to put in a mass drain field in order to do his 51 homes, I think, on Onville Road. And we actually expanded the urban services area because of the environmental concerns of having a community drain field so close to a quiet creek, because that encroached and would have to be, I think, I can't remember what the environmental study said, but it was, there was a big issue. So we actually ended up expanding the urban services area for them to connect to well and septic instead of, in lieu of doing a community drain field, because of the concerns that we had about contamination of a mass drain field being so close to the creek. So I know there's, and I remembered when we were doing that, they had talked about another subdivision's drain field had failed, and that's the reason they were also very concerned. So, anyway.
Another comment, if I may. So can you make any broad comments? I'm talking about the controllability of nitrogen leakage.
I'm talking about the controllability of nitrogen leakage. You know, nitrogen is more easily controlled in a community system than it is by individual septic systems. Was any consideration given to the environmental pros and cons of a mass drainfield versus individual septic tanks? Because regardless, if you have a 50-house subdivision, you're having 50 houses worth of sewage, no matter whether it's in 50 septic tanks or one big place. So do you have any knowledge or comment on the environmental and ease of maintaining?
Not on the technical aspects of it, but what we've seen in the development of some of the subdivisions is that when they cannot find the drainfield sites for, let's say, 50 lots, then their next step might be to have a community drainfield that can service those 50 lots. But as far as the specifics of nitrogen and phosphorus, I don't have that information for you at this time, but I'll be glad to get that for you. Or I saw one of our soil scientists that works with the Health Department is in the audience, he might be able to answer some of those more specific questions for nitrogen and phosphorus.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so, thank you so much, Ms. Hornung. We'll move on to the public hearing on this item. So if anyone would like to come down to the podium, please state your name, address, the district that you reside. You have three minutes to speak. When the green light comes on, you have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute. When the red light comes on, your time has expired.
Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Danny Hatch. I'm at 13260 Sulla Monroe, just across the deep run there in Southern Falkir from Stafford. I do have a consulting company. I am a soil scientist, been practicing soils for many, many decades here in the Stafford area. I want to come to you tonight, and some of the things I've heard, you know, I just kind of got to bite my tongue. Community systems are not your grandmother's drainfield. They're not distribution boxes with septic tank of fluid going into it and going out to 100 gravel trenches in a big area. They're not those types of systems anymore. The alternative systems that we talk about, the greater than 1,000 gallons, or highly treated wastewater that are regulated, that are operated by licensed professionals, by licensed people that are regulated by the SEC, just like your public utilities are. As a soil scientist, my main part of this is to find the dispersal areas. This clean water that has gotten 90% pure or more, we've got to get it back into Mother Nature. That's what all drainfields do. We treat them, we get them back into the earth and recharge the aquifer. I want to, oh, one of the things I want to point out is, I've got a statement here from Lance Gregory, he's the Acting Director of the Virginia Department of Onsite Sewage and Services. I talked to him some time ago when this topic came up, and he was nice enough to look up some articles from the VDH. And there's been many reports that the VDH, their enrichment, has sent to the General Assembly. One of the quotes is, "Nitrogen is more easily controlled in community systems, and any mechanism to encourage or require community systems would result in additional reductions to the bay." The Department of Environmental Quality states that "single-family home systems suffer from wide swings in flows and strength of wastewater, so that it is difficult to get reliable treatment for any single-family home unit. The efficiency of any nutrient removal technology is affected by these swings, which are more pronounced in single-family homes." The point is, community systems are operated and owned by one entity. It's not the HOA. It's a private utility company that's going to own and operate these systems that we're looking at. I would want to encourage the Planning Commission, the county, the discussions I heard here tonight, in my opinion, we're really moving backwards. We've got the technology, we've got the tools that we could help the citizens of Stafford County that have these failing drainfields, that may be clustered in areas of bad soils, where we can find better soils and have treatment and do these, oh my goodness, my time's up, these there. I recommend you not to move this forward tonight. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Mike Lynn, and I'm not from Stafford. I live in 10301 on Burwell Road in Noakesville, Virginia, which is Prince William County. And I've got 30 years of experience in this industry. I'm the chairman of the Sewage Handling Disposal Advisory Committee, appointed by the Commissioner of Health. And my company owns and operates these communal systems that you're talking about. And, you know, I'd like to reiterate first what Danny said. The information that you've been given by staff, the definitions that you've been given by these fellows over here are incorrect. You've got bad advice. You don't have the correct definitions of the terms. An onsite system is a system that discharges into the ground, regardless of whether it's a communal system or on lot. If it's not an onsite system, it's a discharge system that discharges into the stream. In effect, what you're doing is you're saying, well, you know what? We'd rather have 600 individual discharge systems than a central sewage system down at Little Falls that treats all that. That's the decision you're making here. Danny pointed out a lot of things about the nitrogen reduction. Just want to tell you that I'm regulated by the State Corporation Commission. I'm smaller, but my requirements are the same as Verizon, Dominion Energy, Columbia Gas, all those things. So when I take these systems on, I have to have a budget that shows that we can perform, that we can maintain these systems the way they're supposed to be maintained, that we have reserves for repairs and future replacements. And if all that thing, if all that goes wrong, if that goes completely wrong, then the county doesn't step in, the State Corporation Commission steps in. So that's your fail-safe, not the county, it's the State Corporation Commission. They would take that into receivership, they would find another entity to run it or manage it, and they would take over it. I don't plan on doing that. I think Danny pointed out some really good things that the Virginia Department of Health really wants to move in this direction. You've got Falkir County, your neighbor, installing an 80,000-gallon-per-day community onsite sewage system to serve the needs of the existing residents and future development in Catlet and Calverton. Okay? So it's much better for these systems to have one point of contact, one point of treatment, and one point of dispersal than relying on 60 or 70 or 300 individual homeowners to do what they're supposed to do. So don't ban these things. If you want to look at requirements that require a utility to own or operate it, or require the HOA to form a utility to own and operate it and be, it had to be me, it could be the HOA that does this. Those are the kind of things that you should be looking at. But to ban these things, you're really shooting yourself in the foot, and I don't think it's very green. So thanks for letting me speak.
Seeing no one else come down, I'm going to close the public hearing on item number four on the agenda. Ms. Hornung, do you want to come back up? Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Hornung?
I do.
Mr. Appicella, come on.
Just a clarification. So the referral, it doesn't give us an opportunity to make any changes. It's an up or down vote on this, right?
Excuse me, that is correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing no one else having any questions, thank you so much, Ms. Hornung. I'll bring it back to the Commission for Discussion. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. McPherson.
I would like to make a motion, but defer if anybody has a comment first.
Okay, so a motion to defer, can I get a second?
No, I'm deferring if somebody wants to comment before I make a motion.
Okay, I understand. Does anybody want to comment before Mr. McPherson makes a motion? It's not, Mr. English?
No, I don't have a.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move that the Planning Commission does not accept the proposed ordinance I think that this is a short-sighted, very heavy-handed decision based, I think there's definite alternatives out there, but I can talk about that later. I move that we do not approve the proposed ordinance.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. McPherson, a second by Mr. Boswell. Do I have any, Mr. McPherson, do you want to comment?
Yes, I would. I think that there are alternative ways to look at this. Rather than banning mass drainfields, community drainfields outright, perhaps we can look at, as was brought up, other ways to mitigate or solve these problems. I believe there are environmental considerations that have not possibly been thoroughly considered, so that is why I make that motion. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Boswell.
I agree with Mr. McCrea.
Okay. Anybody else have any discussion? Mr. Bain?
I'm just wondering, rather than a vote tonight, up or down, is it possible to delay the vote and seek additional input on the issue?
You can't change it, but you could do more research and then you could get additional, you know, you could, you can make a better recommendation. So whenever we vote, we can send another recommendation to the board. We can say, "We vote to deny this or approve this, but with, this is what we think." So if you, so want staff to do that, you can make a motion and get a second, and that would be a substitute.
Madam Chair, I would like to amend my motion to include Councilman Bain's, Commissioner Bain's comments, that we work with staff to, I move that we reject tonight, work with staff to come up with an alternative plan and then possibly send that to the board.
Go ahead, Mr. Appicella.
I think it would maybe be better, perhaps, if we deferred to get some more input. There was somebody from Utilities here who could respond, and I have great respect for Mr. Hatch and the other gentlemen. Mr. Hatch did my soil work. And so, just so we get, I don't want to say an opposing view, but some comments from staff and/or from the Utilities folks to see, to look at the comments that they made to kind of give us their view of the world.
Mr. McPherson, would you consider amending your motion to a complete deferral and not voting it down tonight, but deferring it to maybe the next meeting or the meeting after that?
I thought we had to vote up or down.
No, we have a timeline until May 27th, so we can defer it up until May 27th. We just have to vote by May 27th. But it's an up or down vote on the text. We can't change any of the text. But we could vote to defer until May 27th.
Okay, I would like some clarification. If we have to vote up or down on the text, then I still, my motion is still that we vote no on the text, because I think that there is still other input required. And then if we have to.
But we could do that next time, so if you still feel the same way.
If you defer it in two weeks, you could then defer, you could deny it. Like if we defer it for two weeks.
I just don't want to keep pushing us down closer to the deadline.
Okay, so it sounds like you want to vote it down and then get additional information and send it to the board with a denial. So you have that motion, Mr. Boswell has a second. Our discussion is kind of ongoing. Would anyone like to make an alternative substitute motion?
I move, Madam Chairman, that we defer this item until next week to get some more research done by staff, the Utilities Department, and other folks who might have some input into this matter.
I support that.
Hang on, okay, hold on. Okay, the meeting is May 9th, that would be the next meeting. So I have a motion by Mr. Appicella and a second, who seconded, Mr. Randall? So, any discussion, Mr. Appicella? Any discussion, Mr. Randall?
No, just to the point that's been made, is I think there's some questions that were brought up that we need to, yes or no, right or wrong, we need to have all the information before we make a decision. So I am in favor of deferring it.
Okay, perfect. Any other commissioners like to comment?
I'm going to vote no, because I feel like what it is, it is, and I think it's protecting the citizens, so I think it was a reason for doing it, so I'm going to vote no.
Okay, any other comments?
Madam Chair, I do support Vice Chair Appicella's motion.
Okay, sounds good. So now we'll vote on a deferral until the next meeting, which is May 9th. Okay, the motion passes 6-1.
If I could, the two gentlemen that spoke, could I get their business cards before they leave, if you don't mind?
Perfect. Yep, okay, great. If you could just get us your contact information, and then we can send it to the whole Commission. Okay, moving on to item number five on the agenda, amendments to the subdivision and zoning ordinances for TRC. And for this, we recognize Ms. Hornung again.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. By resolution 18-74, the board had forwarded proposed amendments to the Stafford County Code for the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance specifically regarding E-Plans, which is electronic plan review, and Technical Review Committee, which is TRC. And this would clarify not only certain requirements within the ordinance, but also to address the Technical Review Committee and Electronic Plan Review. The county is, excuse me, the county is moving toward electronic plan review as currently the building permits are already at that phase for plans. And while doing that, we would need to amend the ordinance so that, the ordinance currently specifically states paper submissions, but we want to amend the ordinance so that we are allowed to accept electronic format or E-Plans. The plan applications would be, could be filed at any time at the convenience of the applicant, and it would eliminate the need for filing deadlines for Technical Review Committee, or could, as well as minimizing the need for paper and in-person meetings. The use of the E-Plans would make it readily apparent what corrections would need to be made. Typically, the first review might take a little longer, but once that's completed, the subsequent reviews would happen a lot quicker. Currently, the planning, a planning commissioner is designated as a member of the TRC and provides community input during the administrative process, and the TRC has at least one meeting with the applicant for major subdivision plans and major site plans, including preliminary subdivision plans, which are less frequent. The TRC typically meets twice a month, and this meeting is required part of the process. The board has asked that the Planning Commission add input whether or not at least one meeting between the applicant and TRC should be completed, should continue to be compulsory. At their meeting in February 14th of this year, the Planning Commission recommended the TRC meeting be held on an as-requested basis by the applicant, board, or Planning Commission's district representative. As an as-requested meeting would allow the applicants to have a face-to-face discussion with the TRC reviewers about specific technical requirements and allow for planning commissioners and board members to meet with the applicant to discuss these concerns. Prior to the implementation of E-Plans, amendments to the subdivision zoning ordinance chapters would be required. And what I'd like to do is go specifically through those individual items and let you know what is actually being changed or recommended for amendment. In 22-4 of the subdivision ordinance, the definition of Technical Review Committee would just be amended slightly to include technical review of preliminary subdivision plans and construction plans, because currently it just states site plans. Under 22-57 of filing, it would add information that would state, "All preliminary subdivision plans shall be filed on standard forms," and then the new language, "and/or electronic format, as provided by the Department of Planning and Zoning Department." There's some information that's also going to be updated throughout the ordinance, because you have different information regarding planning and zoning, so we want to clarify and call it Department of Planning and Zoning as it's currently titled.
Ms. Hornung, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Is, do you already have the formats available? Are those formats ready to go?
For E-Plans?
For E-Plans.
No, staff is working toward that. Last year, we were moving ahead, but with the loss of two staff members who were heavily involved, we took a hiatus until we completed, hired the two people to replace them. Now, since they're trained in other things, staff is currently working full speed ahead for E-Plans. We're hoping that by late June, there might be a soft opening so that we can do some E-Plans submission with major site plans and construction. site plans and construction plans. And we are making sure that all our manuals and some videos and the documents that are needed for E-Plans are updated for planning and zoning department, as well as anything that we need to provide for the website so that the applicants and engineers, typically the professionals who we deal with for construction plans and site plans, that they'll be able to look at that information and easily apply online and submit the information required in the format that we require in order for staff to do the reviews.
So the intent would be that before approval overall of this, that we would have something in place, it would have gone through some preliminary work, and we would be sure that we had the right formats for e-filing. Is that correct?
Right. Staff is working on having the specifics for what needs to be required as far as the software, what's required, but we need to make these changes in the ordinance to allow the E-Plans filing, because currently the ordinance specifically states paper copies.
Thank you very much.
Andrew, I have a quick question, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I believe I know the answer, but for e-filing, there would be no issues with required things like PE stamps, signatures, all that is available with e-file, right?
Yes.
Professional engineering stamps and all that?
When the engineers, the professional community uploads their documents, they will already have those items embedded in the document.
Okay, thank you.
So instead of getting a paper copy of a site plan, it would be receiving it electronically. So it's pretty much the same.
And I think this really kind of goes into the industry standards now, because I saw a builder the other day, and he had a little iPad, could pull the plans right up on there. You could see everything. I mean, it was a little hard to see, and you'd have to zoom in on some things, but I think it kind of aligns to with what the industry is using already.
Yes, we do have, I believe, staff mentioned that about 20% of building permits are submitted electronically, and I think they started a soft allowance in September of last year. Under content of 22-58, the language would be added that the plan sheets for both paper and electronic plans shall contain the following information pursuant to the standard format for electronic plan submission. We have in our ordinance specifics on what needs to be on paper, so that will transpire as well to the electronic version. Some other language to clean up, currently in your ordinance, number 12 of that same section, it refers to AOSE, which is Authorized On-Site Soil Evaluator, and the recommendation was to revise it to LOSE for license, but having conversations with health department and looking at the state code, it is now referred to as OSC, On-Site Soil E evaluator. So staff recommends that instead of replacing AOSE with LOSE, we go through the ordinance, and wherever AOSE and LOSE is listed, we replace that information with OSC to coincide with state code. 22-59 refers to public access and removing office of the agent, replacing it with Department of Planning and Zoning. Further in that paragraph, discussing that the information will be available for review by all interested persons during normal business hours for no less than five business days prior to receiving planning commission approval. Planning commission is added. That refers to a preliminary subdivision plan. So once the staff report is completed, which is typically completed five days prior to the planning commission meeting, that is also listed in this paragraph so that the documents will be available those five days prior to your meeting. Under 22-61, technical review committee, the statement was added, "Upon request of the agent, applicant, board of supervisors, or planning commission district representative, the technical review committee shall conduct a meeting with the applicant at a time and place as established by the agent. If such meeting is requested, then the rest is existing prior to presenting a preliminary subdivision plan application to the planning commission for review, new information, and final decision or approval or denial," and the remaining stays the same. Basically, that solidifies that while the technical review committee will no longer be a requirement on specific days unless they submit paper, that the agent, which is county staff, applicant, the board of supervisors, or planning district representative could recommend a TRC, Technical Review Committee, if they're submitting by electronic plan review, or at any time. Under 22-62 for commission review and action, the language is added, "Agent upon authorization by the planning commission," and removing chairman. So the statement will actually read, "The planning commission shall review and approve preliminary plans. Approval shall be indicated on the face of the plan by signature of the agent upon authorization by the planning commission."
Ms. Hornung, can you time out for one second? Mr. Bain has a question about the paragraph just before that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It just occurred to me, you're saying that the TRC would, could be initiated by a request of the planning commission district representative. Does it have to be limited to just the district representative that that site is in, or could it be any planning commission member?
I'm sure it could be any.
And should the wording reflect that?
Because it's agent, applicant, board member. It specifically states right now, planning commission district representative.
Could it say planning commission member? That way, it could be any, because Mr. Bain brought up a good point. Sometimes we're traveling, and if we said, "Hey, could you, you know, keep an eye on this while I'm out?"
Sure.
It would allow for others to look out for other districts. Yeah, Mr. Boswell could be the designee.
Designee would be better than member, or planning commission member.
Would you really want another planning commission to call for a TRC in your district? I mean, I don't know.
If they saw something that I didn't see, I'd welcome it. Yeah. I mean, if you were going to do it, I would appreciate your calling me and saying you're going to do it, but yeah, I wouldn't object to somebody else picking it up and saying, "Hey."
Yeah, but I'm not sure I would want to be able to call all this together in your district without your permission, is what I'm saying, but, you know.
I see your point. Mr. Randall?
I think designee is an appropriate alternative to that agent, that agent or as designated appointee or designated representative.
I don't know what designee means, so...
It means, Steve, if you weren't in town, you could say, "I would like Roy to have this."
But how are we gonna formalize that?
I don't know. I don't think we should do it, but...
I mean, I think if a planning commissioner has an issue, they have two options. They could go to the respective planning commissioner, or they could go to the agent and say, "Hey, you know, I think there's an issue here." If the agent thinks it's a significant issue, then maybe it's worth having a TRC. I hear what you're saying. Right, I mean, so that's seven, seven more, six more people who could initiate a TRC for something not in their district.
And it's a lot of work, right?
Yeah.
He withdraws his comment.
Well, do we need to take a vote on this change? I feel like it's getting contentious. Mr. Bain, do you feel very strongly about this, or are you gonna let it slide?
No, I don't feel strongly. I'll withdraw my suggestion, as long as the term agent is in there and that covers, you know, Andrea and Brian and Mike, then, all right.
So we're good with keeping agent, applicant, board of supervisors, planning commission, district representative. And we have agent, and agent defaults as well to staff in consultation with Mr. Harvey. Section 22-76 on submission of plans, this is a section that refers to construction plans. Some extra language, additional language to clean up the existing language would add infrastructure, developments of less than 51 lots. The reason why developments of less than 51 lots was included is because since the General Assembly revised the state code that a preliminary plan is not required until you develop 51 lots and more, we wanted to put this in here because frequently we see construction plans of subdivisions that are less than 51 lots. Otherwise, it would be covered by a preliminary plan where it's at least 51 lots. So we wanted to try to capture everything. Also in that same paragraph, because throughout the subdivision ordinance, it frequently refers to preliminary subdivision plan, we wanted to be consistent in the language. So wherever preliminary plan was submitted, was, is listed in the ordinance, subdivision will be before it, because we have preliminary subdivision plans. Those are the projects that we'll In the next paragraph, paragraph one, you see subdivision has been added, and also language that states that the construction plans shall be submitted on standard forms or in standard format for electronic plan submission. What will happen is, while staff is developing these user guides in addition through the software that's required and also conforming it to the use of site plans and construction plans where we're going to move forward, we will have a format that's required, so there's consistency with submissions, and it will also help to make it a little easier for staff review. And by doing that, we will hopefully eliminate, or, excuse me, minimize the time for review, so that by submitting electronically, we hope that it will be much quicker than a paper copy. All plans shall be prepared by architect, landscape architect, which has been added, and then also, or other persons authorized by the Virginia Code. Again, in paragraph five adds standard format for electronic plan submission. And then in paragraph 6A, we have added, "Or in accordance with the size and scale requirements as provided by the Department of Planning and Zoning for electronic plan submission." So throughout the subdivision and zoning ordinance, we've added language that refers to size and scale and information regarding electronic plan submission. 22-77 content also discusses and adds the information for, "The sheets for both paper and electronic plans shall contain the following information pursuant to the standard format for electronic plan submission. There is a list of what's required on paper copies for construction plans, and this also includes electronic plans," so that there, there'll be consistency of what's submitted for review. 22-86 for filing, "After approval of the preliminary subdivision plan, except where the requirement for preliminary plans are not required." That is because there's preliminary subdivision plan, oops, I would like to add preliminary subdivision in that same, we got it in one statement, sentence, the beginning sentence, but "except where the requirement for preliminary subdivision plans are not required because of the state code does not require preliminary subdivision plan except for those creating lots 51 and more." And also adds the language for standard format for electronic plan submission. In 22-87, added the language again for size and scale requirements as provided by the Department of Planning and Zoning for electronic plan submission, be in accordance with the size as well. And the reason why it says plat is because the state code references plat, but it also, plat is interpreted to mean plans and plat. Further, in required forms and signatures for 9B, we've added, the information is added that there be a cover sheet, electronic signature may be provided. The same with paragraph C. And then number 14, again, replaces some of the information and adds, "Department of Planning and Zoning formatting requirements are available through the Stafford County webpage." By putting that information in there, it allows for future amendments to the formatting should the software change for whatever reason and whatever the requirements may need to be for electronic plan submission. Now we get to the zoning ordinance. In the, for site plans, site or, site plan or site development plan, the language or electronic images was included. Also, under technical review committee, this definition will be exactly the same as the one in the subdivision ordinance, where the TRC is empowered with the responsibility of preliminary subdivision plans, construction plans, and site plans under the standards of the county code. So whether you look in the subdivision ordinance or the zoning ordinance, the TRC definition will be the same. In 28-247, this is the list of requirements for minor site plan, minor site development plan. The details for paper copies has been eliminated, and the language, "It shall be to the size and specifications required by the Department of Planning and Zoning." This allows for some flexibility should the size and dimensions change because of software or other requirements. 28-248 also refers to major site development plans requirements, and those changes are also addressing the sizes. The language, "Plan sheet shall be drawn in a size and scale as required by the Department of Planning and Zoning" was added. Paragraph E discuss, states, "At least 10 clearly illegible blue or black line copies." That'll be removed, and the language added would be, "The number of planned copies submitted by a paper or electronic media format shall comply with the standards established by the Department of Planning and Zoning." One important reason for this is that through time, VDOT now requires three paper copies because of how they distribute, so 10 copies are not enough anymore. We need at least 13, and sometimes some departments may need more than one copy. So by allowing this, we'll give more flexibility to receiving additional paper copies or the format needed for electronic plan review.
Does VDOT allow for electronic submission?
Staff is working with VDOT. To give you a small update, staff met with health department, and our IT will be working with health department's IT on giving them the ability to review for plans electronically. The electronic plan review software is through the internet, so there's very little licensed software that you really need. It's through a link that will come through us, that they'll be able to be, able to be, they will be able to review online, real-time, the same as we do here in the county. Staff is working with VDOT, and there's been some concern because VDOT has different people that need to review, and they send it out, so that hasn't been finalized yet. They have, VDOT has changed their email system to a Gmail, so they've had some computer system changes in the meantime. So staff is working with VDOT to coordinate and organize a time that we can all meet and see how the system will work. So we're positive that we'll be able to get there with VDOT to do electronic plan review as well.
Are there any other entities other than VDOT, like DEQ or Chesapeake Bay Authority or anybody else who has to see these that we have to worry about?
We don't, staff does, for preliminary, for preliminary subdivision plans, construction plans, and site plans, staff doesn't interact with those agencies as much. Typically, it's the environmental plan reviewers who will interact with them through some other types of wetland or Chesapeake Bay applications, so they may have interaction more one-on-one that they can do. They don't typically receive a site plan or a construction plan to review as fire, utilities, environmental planners, VDOT, and health department do.
Okay, thank you.
And the last part of 28-248 for requirements, the paragraph... And the last part of twenty-eight two forty-eight for requirements, the paragraph F discusses profiles, shall be submitted on standard plan profile sheets. The statement is being removed, special studies as required may be submitted on standard cross-section paper and shall be on an approximate scale. No sheet size shall exceed 42 inches. That's been removed and the remainder is the same. I wanted to-
Should that also say that the profiles can be by E-plan?
I'm sorry?
Should that be changed to say that the profiles can be incorporated into the E-plan rather than on standard sheets?
Sheets, that's a good point. We do have it. Maybe we remove sheets and say standard profiles? Because in the previous paragraph, we have via paper electronic media format. So maybe profiles shall be submitted on, on standard plan, profile. Maybe we do say sheets and electronic media format?
I think that would be-
Would that?
I think so.
That way we can capture so that it's not, even though we might still say sheets for electronic plan review, it's still implied that it can be paper or electronic media format.
Right. That's good.
And I didn't specify earlier, but the resolution does state at the end that the planning commission may make recommendations, may make modifications to the proposed ordinance as it deems necessary and appropriate for all these sections that are listed. Excuse me, I just wanted to make sure that I added the additional items that was, became apparent after discussing the information with health department. There's other sections in the subdivision ordinance in twenty-two dash eighty-seven for section 12 where it discusses drain fields and it's not in your ordinance as presented, but we have a paragraph that discusses drain fields and it lists LOSE. And so the recommendation is to just make it OSB. Then there is a paragraph below, as in a chart, that also refers to LOSE as well as paragraph B. This is A and B under number 12, where wherever it's listed as LOSE, that it be replaced with OSB if that's acceptable to the planning commission. That's a recommendation that's not currently in your ordinance.
Anybody have any issues with that? All right, sounds like it's a deal. Anything else? Any other questions?
I am-
Andy, go ahead.
Mr. Randall.
Yes, sir.
If we can go back to section twenty-two dash eighty-seven, follow me, please.
Yes, sir.
Is it the final plat or the final plan? And what's the difference?
Well, under state code, plat refers to plat and plan interchangeably. In our ordinance, we refer to plan as the site plan and construction plan and preliminary plan and plat, which is the recorded document, as plat in our code, in the Stafford County code. But in the state code, plat is used synonymously to infer plat or plan.
Okay. We call it plan on all the other changes. Is there some benefit to leaving it plan through this section as well? Does it remove any potential conflicts if we've now talked to two separate things without defining them?
I think if I recall, twenty-two eighty-seven refers to final plat-
Subdivision plat.
Final subdivision plat. So that's why this section says plat. The other sections previous to this refer to preliminary subdivision plan and construction plan. But twenty-two eighty-seven refers to the final plat and the requirements of submitting a final plat for review and recordation. So that's why this says plat.
Okay, thank you.
Mr.- Okay, go ahead.
If you extend the use of electronic media, the actual plat that a surveyor prepares is done at a one-to-one scale. It's done in the computer at real-world scale. It's not at a hundred-foot scale or anything. They set it to a scale when they print it out on a sheet of paper, but in the computer they're actually working at a one-to-one scale. And so to a certain extent, that first sentence really is, is not needed if you're going to accept an electronic form of the plat. Does that make sense?
I understand, no, yes, I understand and I, it's possibly correct, but I'm thinking that when we're reviewing and we're comparing and we have to measure, like on a, the width of a lot, we'd have to measure the width and make sure that those dimensions are accurate. I would think we would need a scale on that so that when we're doing a measurement, that we can verify that those dimensions on that lot conform to that zoning district requirement for bulk standards.
And Commissioner Bain, I believe we should be covered here because it said that scale one inch equals 100 or otherwise agreed to by the agent. And with plats especially, we're going to probably be still living in the paper world until the state changes its requirements for recording subdivisions. We may be able to review the plat up to a certain point in electronic format, but the final version still under the statute is required to have original signatures and be paper and filed with the clerk's office. So this, part of this ordinance is to allow us the flexibility in the future if that changes that we can go to all electronic. But as Ms. Hornung said, in some cases, especially with subdivision plats, we're probably going to be working in both worlds, the paper and the electronic for some time to come.
Mr. McPherson, I know you had a question.
Yeah, just one thing. Section twenty-two dash seventy-six on page four there, the bullet number three about the all plan shall be prepared, blah, 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 is identical to the first sentence of six A. Maybe just, it's not a big deal, but maybe clean that up and keep one or the other so we aren't being redundant.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Hornung. Now we will open up the public hearing for this item. So if anyone would like to come down and state your name, address, and the district you reside, you have three minutes to talk when the red light comes on. Your time has expired. Would anyone like to come down? Okay, seeing no one come to the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing on the amendments to the subdivision and zoning ordinance and bring it back to the commission. Do we have any questions before somebody makes a motion? Seeing no questions, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the amendments to the subdivision zoning ordinance.
Okay, do we have a second?
And I'll second those.
So a motion by Mr. English to make the amendments that we discussed here tonight, with a second by Mr. Randall. Any comments, Mr. English?
No.
Mr. Randall?
Uh, no.
Any others? Okay, let's vote. All right, motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Hornung. Now moving on to unfinished business, item number six on the agenda, the reclassification of the Stafford Airport Industrial Park. And for this, we recognize Mr. Gooch again.
Good evening again, Madam Chairman, members of the commission, Brian Gooch, Planning and Zoning. This is the application for Stafford Airport Industrial Park reclassification. This application was originally considered by the planning commission on March 28th. Comments made at the public hearing include concerns regarding compatibility of development with Stafford Regional Airport. The applicant has proffered that development will conform to the airport compatibility recommendations in the comp plan, specifically appendix H, table one, land use compatibility matrix, and table two, additional review standards. There are also concerns regarding uncertainty of uses to be developed on the property. No application revisions have been provided to specifically address this concern. Also, there are concerns regarding traffic generation from the development and no application revisions have been provided to address this concern. Upon further review of code requirements for application submittals, staff has found that the requirements for submittal of a TIA have not been followed. The code requires that traffic generation estimates for rezoning projects be based on the maximum potential development of the property. Proffers which limit vehicle trips per day or that limits certain uses on the property may be taken into consideration when determining the maximum potential development. Although the applicant has proffered a maximum of 500,000 square foot of development, there's no certainty that traffic generation for the development will not exceed what was envisioned in the TIA. Staff has recommended that the applicant proffer a maximum vehicles per day based on the traffic generation numbers provided in the TIA to comply with this requirement. Staff is recommending deferral of this application until revisions can be made to ensure compliance with submittal requirements. And I'll take any questions.
The chair is otherwise indisposed, so I'm going to ask some questions. You mentioned that there were some issues with the TIA, so I'm going to walk through that. Can you read the requirements under section twenty-eight dash two oh three dash three C and C1?
Yes, sir. That states, request for rezoning, rezoning meeting the following criteria shall be accompanied with the, with an analysis of impact. Any reclassification to any land use district where maximized development under the regulations of that district would generate 500 or more average trips for the development. Traffic impact analysis as outlined in twenty-four VAC 30155 shall be submitted when any land use reclassification where the maximum development permitted under the district regulations would generate 1,000 or more vehicle trips per day or when meet the VDOT requirements for TIAs under twenty-four VAC 30155. Proffers which limit the vehicle trips per day may be taken into consideration when calculating the maximum development. An addendum or supplementary TIA shall be submitted when required by VDOT regulations.
Okay, there's a lot there. I'm wondering if you can tell us in layman terms what you just said.
So when a rezoning comes in, if they're, if they're not proposing to proffer out any uses, then the TIA should be based on the maximum development of the property so that, that takes in some assumption of how much square footage could be developed on the property and what the highest generating use is based on the ITE manual.
Okay, and can you read, I'm sorry. Can you read the fourth paragraph of attachment five, page four, section 1.2 of the previous agenda package on this item? And that, that is the TIA.
For the purposes of this TIA, the site has been evaluated for up to 500,000 square feet of light industrial development. The build-out timeline for the site shall be, will be market dependent and is assumed for the purposes of this TIA to be 10 years or 20, 25.
Okay, so you did say light industrial uses was the basis for which this-
That's correct.
Okay. Did the applicant proffer the GDP?
They did not.
Did the applicant proffer light industrial development only?
They did not.
So the only limitation that they proffered, I think you indicated, was the square footage being limited to 500,000 square feet?
That's correct.
Again, and in layman's terms, this is a general, generalized rezoning, right?
Right, right.
Okay. So in this case, did the applicant base their TIA on the highest uses or on the lower end of the traffic impacts that might occur?
I would say on the lower end, it depends on what uses you compare it to. A lot of the, the M1 uses are relatively low traffic generators, but there are some, some outliers like convenience center, convenience store, and restaurants. So the applicant based the TIA on the assumption that it would be light industrial uses on the property, which the ITE uses seven vehicle trips per day, I believe, per thousand square feet of light industrial uses.
Okay, and of the 500,000 square feet, I think they identified one structure being a warehouse that was 250,000 square feet, that being half of the total square footage that they've limited themselves to, right?
I believe there are two warehouse structures they identified on the plan. Yeah, so this big building here, 250,000 square feet, and then the other one is-
Hang on, computer.
Oh, computer.
Perfect.
I believe it's 150,000 on that one.
So what, that's about three-fourths or more of the total being warehouses?
Correct.
Again, with lower impacts in terms of traffic.
Yes, warehouse uses, based on the IT manual, have a traffic generation of two and a half trips per day per thousand square feet.
Okay, and so the bottom line- The bottom line here is we have a county code requirement for the submission of plans and part of that requires that a TIA be produced when certain thresholds have been met. In this case, did they meet the specific requirements identified in the code for a TIA for this specific development?
We feel that they did not.
Okay, and if, and if they did not, and I think that's what you're saying, what are their options to correct this matter?
I see it as three options potentially. They could revise the transportation impact analysis based on the maximum permissible development and the highest traffic generating use. They could proffer a maximum vehicle trips per day that's consistent with the transportation impact analysis they've already done. Or they could proffer out uses that generate more traffic than what light industrial use is, is counted as in the, the IT manual, which is around seven trips per thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, they have no clue what's going in there, correct? Nothing?
That's correct.
They don't have, so it could be two buildings instead of five, it could be one building, correct?
As far as I know, they don't, they don't have any potential tenants lined up.
Okay.
Or it could be seven restaurants, right? I mean, in theory, it could be seven restaurants.
Could be, but I, you know, I wouldn't see that that happening.
Well, who knows?
Okay, well-
Brian, is, would it permitted to use to be something like a vocational school or some kind of a training if we were to rezone to light industrial?
Vocational school is a by right use in the M1 district, yes.
Okay, so that would generate, you know, any kind of a school significant traffic, I would imagine. Thank you.
That calculation is about 27.5 per thousand square feet.
I don't think that's allowed through the, with the airport. Is it, schools not allowed in there because of the way it's-
Vocational school.
I don't think it's allowed.
I don't believe it's excluded based on the compatibility matrix, but I can take another look at that.
Any other questions for Mr. Gooch and then we can have the applicant come up? Mr. Afficella? No? Oh, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Gooch. All right, would the applicant like to come up and speak?
How are you doing? Lee Sherwick, Hilda Properties, applicant. Where would you like me to start? I can address the-
I would start with some of the concerns that you've heard.
Sure. I disagree with the interpretation. The maximum development under that project is over 2 million square feet. What I did, and what that does, it's a, it's a matrix that allows you to say, listen, if you're going to generate 500 trips, you're required to do a traffic impact statement. If you go over 1,000, you have to do a traffic, traffic impact analysis. We knew very well that we were going to go over 1,000 square, 1,000 trips per day. And also, 2 million square feet is not appropriate for that site. Under your, or under the classification here, I would have to do 2 million square feet of a restaurant on a traffic- on a traffic impact analysis for that site. In my mind, that wasn't commercially reasonable. By doing the traffic impact analysis, it was based off of the logical use there. And in doing the traffic impact analysis, we had two members of Stafford County staff on-site at the scoping meeting where everybody agreed, this is how we're going to run the TIA. And when we did that, everyone was in agreement, and we ran it through the process. I don't agree with the interpretation. I would have to run, per this calculation, over 2 million square feet of restaurant. It's not applicable. I just... And what I did is I proffered it to 500,000 square feet of the logical use. And so, that is my response to it. I also says that... The language here also says that we may proffer... We may proffer... Add profers to limit the vehicle trips per day in order to reduce it from 3,000 to 1,000 to 500. And so, I don't agree with the interpretation on that. What I did is, with SCAT staff's guidance and approval, I ran the TIA based on what everyone agreed upon.
So, I'm going to use an analogy. We have lots of B2 up on 610. Same set of circumstances. Let's just say somebody had a parcel that was 2 million square feet capacity that they could have put on there.
Sure.
But they've only identified 500,000 square feet, and they gave us a TIA that had the lowest possible impacts on 610. And you're telling me that that would be fine? It doesn't really matter that they've sent us something that doesn't really give us a good sense of the traffic impacts if they did go to something that was a very high-intensity use? 610, I can imagine several restaurants going on a 500,000 square foot footprint. So, we should... What you're saying is, we should accept the notion, even though it's a smaller amount of square footage that... than you can possibly do, we should accept low-intensity uses as gospel when you still retain the right, if this gets approved, to do far greater uses where the traffic impacts could be exponentially higher. You can't guarantee us today what you're going to put on that parcel.
I can't.
So, we can't know, in the absence of a guarantee, which I'm bewildered that you're not willing to consider a maximum daily vehicle count. It tells me that you're expecting it to be higher than 3663.
I am trying to maintain opportunity, and if it makes sense, I'd like to be able to pursue.
So, what if it's 8,000 cars?
What if it's 100?
100. That's... Our goal is to mitigate the impacts. If it's 100, there's not a lot of impacts. If there's a delta between 3663 and 8,000, that's a huge difference in terms of the impacts on Rameth Church Road and Route 1. Do you agree or disagree?
I think that is a large delta, yes.
Right. So, again, you've given us a concept plan. You haven't locked yourself into any specific uses. You haven't proffered a GDP.
Correct.
The only limitation that you've put on yourself is the maximum square footage, but again, the traffic could be anywhere from one car to who knows?
I would also say that, under your scenario on 610, on the B2 rezoning, if staff was present in the negotiations and staff agreed to that scope, I think I was given direction and everyone was approved with it. And so, the other aspect, just to make you aware, I did take your concerns to heart. I did spend a fair amount of money doing different scenarios, looking at Stafford County, looking at adjacent uses, looking at within Stafford, I could not find, and granted, I don't know every single parcel, I didn't see a C-store. And to be honest, I can't name a C-store right now that doesn't have fuel. You guys are not allowed to do C-stores with fuel without a special use, is my understanding.
I don't know what a C-store is.
That's what you're doing, a convenience store, sorry. So, what I'm looking at is, yes, I don't know what's going to go there. I'm not going to proffer a GDP because I don't know. It could be 500,000 square feet of moving and storage, could be 500,000 square feet of restaurant. I don't... I don't know what's going to go there, but I would like the opportunity to see what could evolve. By all means, I cannot find a restaurant in M1 in Stafford. There might be one, I might have missed it. Do I think this is going to actually play into real-life scenarios? No, I don't. However, if something that makes sense, and a lot of people smarter than I can figure out what makes sense, I'd like to have the opportunity to pursue it.
Sir, I want to give you flexibility, and there's a lot I like about this project. Again, my responsibility as a member of the planning commission, and ultimately the responsibility of the board, is to ensure that potential impacts are mitigated.
Sure.
Rameth Church Road is, in my opinion, one of the most dangerous roads in Stafford County, and not only in my opinion, but there was a transportation commission, I think, that identified Rameth Church Road as one of the safest roads in Stafford County. So, again, there's a possibility, and our goal is to mitigate risk, okay? You want to mitigate your risk by maximizing your flexibility, and I want to mitigate our risk by ensuring we don't have 10,000 cars going off on the Rameth Church Road. And I'm asking you to help me out here by putting some reasonable cap on the maximum daily vehicle count. And you seem unwilling to do that because what that's telling me is, you don't really... you're not really concerned if it's 10,000 cars. It might be 3,000. It might be less than 3,000, but it could be 10,000. And that doesn't concern you, but it concerns me.
And let me address a couple of your comments. You were talking about impacts. I'm taking A1 land potentially off of your guys' books. A1 land is currently zoned... or it's currently zoned A1. That is a not... It's discouraged by your comp plan. So, I'm trying to make this more in line with your comp plan. I want to add commercial, business, jobs, taxes, revenue, all that stuff. This will have a lesser impact on schools. It'll have a lesser impact on your water and sewer. Financially, it's six times greater. Potentially, it all full build-out, which I understand is out there. I don't know exactly how it's going to develop. We think it's going to be industrial and warehouse. That's going to bring about a half a million dollars a year. Six times what is currently the potential of doing 22 residential homes on there. Every other concern brought up by staff, by fire department, by anybody else, I've addressed. There was a concern last time, I believe you addressed it, about having compatibility issues with the airport.
And I appreciate that you added that.
Happy to... Last thing I want is something reflective and causing any damage. The one thing that I am... I'm fairly comfortable that this is going to develop as planned. I just... I've been through enough situations. I'm in one right now in Caroline County where certain profers and land was put into place. I cannot put an industrial use in an industrial property. And so, that is my general concern. Do I feel... And also, you are saying that I'm dumping 3,600 cars onto Rameth Church Road. You also forgot, my main entrance is on Centerport Parkway, a beautiful road that you guys developed, and industrial aspects will take the path of least resistance.
Do you live in this area?
I do.
Okay. Have you been on Route 1 on a Friday?
Yeah, I was there last Friday, and I was up on Rameth Church Road this morning.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, what happens when I-95 gets backed up?
I can't control that.
No, but what happens when I-95 gets back? I'm just asking, what happens?
Alternate routes get looked at.
And what are those alternate routes?
You know just as well as I do. It depends on where you're on.
Usually, it's Route 1, and Centerport Parkway, I believe, feeds into Route 1. So, you're telling me that there's not going to be... Here's the bottom line. There's this little pesky issue called a code requirement, and I appreciate staff might have said, hey, we think all is good, but the code requirement is the code requirement. You either... Sir, you either met it or you didn't meet it. And from what I've heard from staff, and we can ask our county attorney, you haven't met it, so...
I believe that's an interpretation issue.
I don't... Well, it could be your interpretation.
If you read the code, land use district where maximized development. Maximized development is 2 million square feet.
It would be... In my view, it would be maximized development based on the limitation that you've set, which is 500,000 square feet.
Sure.
So, I don't have a problem with you giving us a TIA based on 500,000 square feet. I'm not asking you to do it on 2 million square feet. I agree, that would be unreasonable. You do have a cap on the square footage, but your TIA should be based on the 500,000 square feet.
It is based on 500,000 square feet.
Of light industrial uses.
Absolutely.
Right. No restaurants...
Let me understand, just for my education here, the fact that I had county staff at the meeting where everybody was in agreement, everybody signed off. I ran the process, which everyone agreed to. So, at that point, we are talking about transportation staff that should know exactly how TIAs, as well as every other aspects of their process, should run. Everybody signed off on it. I ran, in good faith, doing all of that. VDOT has signed off on it. I met all your...
Yes, VDOT based their analysis on light industrial uses.
Absolutely.
I bet if we went back to VDOT and said, you know, it's not... It may not really be light industrial uses. It could be something far greater, you might get a different take from VDOT. In fact, I think you probably would get a different take from VDOT. I bet the code probably says the same... The state code probably says the same thing.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Apchella?
Mr.?
Just to provide some more context, I was talking with the attorney, and our ordinance refers to the Virginia Code in this particular case because of the traffic volume. So, our ordinance has a higher standard than the Virginia Code, and that's what the county staff and VDOT were going on when we had our briefing with the client, was that Virginia Administrative Code says, this is how you do traffic studies. These are the assumptions you're allowed to do. That's what we all came to agreement on. But in looking at our local ordinance, it has the term maximum...
Development permitted.
Thank you. The maximum development permitted, which is not in the Virginia Administrative Code. That's where we run into an issue and really hadn't focused on it at this point in time because the applicant had proffered half a million square feet of industrial development based on the zoning. So, that's how we got here. I think we're close to being all together, but there still needs to be, I guess, some more discussion.
Okay.
So, when it says right here in this section here, Jeff, it says with submission of 28-203, and it says that profers which limit the vehicle trips per day may be taken into consideration, doesn't say shall, does that make a difference?
Well, I've had discussions with Mr. Wizneski about that, and he still feels like the maximum development potential is the driving factor in the amendment.
And who defines maximum developable?
You proffered that, didn't you?
Well, I maxim... I did 500,000.
Right.
And so, I mean, theoretically, I was able to do 2 million.
Mr. Wizneski?
Madam Chairman, the code section at issue creates the standard very clearly as being the maximum development permitted under the district regulations. And the permissive language regarding profers gives applicants the option, and potentially the planning commission and the county the option, to consider or not consider proffered limitations when coming up to that... when coming up with that calculation and determining what the maximum development permitted is. So, the planning commission could choose to ignore any profers and consider the maximum development permitted if there were a proffer and, in a particular case, limiting the development.
Thanks. Any other comments? Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Just very quick, and it's not transportation geared toward. You said that this would lessen water and sewer. How do you see that? Because I can easily think up several light industrial uses that would actually increase water usage and therefore sewer usage.
Sure. This was based off of actual... The applicants, Rich McDaniel and Danny Payne, own probably 20 to 30 different industrial buildings in Spotsylvania and Stafford. This was taken off of actual metered numbers from several different large industrial buildings off of International Parkway. So, that... And then, the residential aspect was run off of your standard house calculations.
Okay. But you say you would agree that conceivably it could exceed it, but you don't think it would?
If I end up doing half a million square feet of restaurant, yes, it could conceivably be...
Or commercial laundry or things of that nature?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
But have they taken into consideration, there's three routes that comes out of there that's... You go Rameth Church, you can go east or west, plus you got the Parkway. So, there's three different routes to go out of. So, you don't normally... Just because I think everybody's thinking, they're focusing on, when you come out of there, you're going right directly to Route 1. You can either go either way, so...
And that was part of our scoping meeting with staff and VDOT about how it would flow.
So, it could be a three... But your main look and your main goal is to use the Parkway. You're not trying...
Our main concept, as well as our main thought, is everyone's going to use Centerport Parkway to a degree. I'm sure there will be other people using Rameth Church Road.
Right.
However...
John Riley? If I may. John Riley with Johnson, Meier, Marin, and Thompson, we conducted the traffic impact analysis. And after a lot of evaluation and, again, discussion with staff and VDOT, we have about a little over 50% of our traffic using Centerport. So, and maybe 20-some going to the west on Rameth and the balance going towards Route 1 on Rameth. So, the actual impact on Rameth Church Road is probably, depending on which way you're going, is around 1,000 vehicle trips per day. One other point is that the use we analyzed, the light industrial, has actually a pretty significant peak hour intensity relative to its daily trips. So, I know all the discussion is revolving around the 3,600 plus or minus trips per day. Our whole analysis is really based on peak hour, how the driveways and the roads function in the peak. And this type of use actually generates probably 50% more traffic in that peak than a typical use might. So, if you're... Just have that in the back of your mind, while this is maybe not the most intense use in the peak hour, it is more intense than the average. The average type of use generates about 10% of its daily traffic during the peak hour. Our site that we analyzed generates about 15% of its traffic during the peak hour. So, also, we will be evaluated at each site plan submission, which is, as stated in the staff report by VDOT, for entrance improvement. So, every time we have a site plan come through, turn lanes will get another look. Even, you know, access management will get another look and so forth. So, there is another bite of the apple, if you will, on traffic as site plans come through.
So, you didn't look at maximum uses?
We did not.
Okay. And if you did, how would that impact Rameth Church Road?
It's speculative. I... When you change the use, you change the distribution, you change the pattern.
But you said it's 20%. I'm just going to throw out a number, 10,000. That may be way too high. I have no idea. So, 20% of 10,000 is more than the number you quoted earlier for the use under light industrial.
That calculation would be, but I... That would be speculative for me to really speak to it without having done the analysis.
But this project is speculative. That's my point. We don't know what we're going to end up with here.
I think the applicant can speak to the... Kind of the risk balance that he's dealing with. I'll let him take that.
We see this as an industrial project. That's why it's called the Stafford Airport Industrial. Yes. If I end up doing 2 million square feet of restaurant, by all means, traffic's going to be a problem. Also, if you look at restaurants, they typically... Their traffic is spread out throughout the day. And so, long story short, it's a balance. It's... I'm trying to understand the risks and concerns and address them to the best of my ability, but I'm also trying to maintain a viable project where the goal, in our mind, was take it off agricultural land and put it into industrial. By all means, I don't foresee restaurants and convenience stores and these things throwing in there, but to be quite honest, I've been wrong before and I'll be wrong again.
I appreciate that, and I don't want you to think I'm against this project because I'm not. I'm only concerned about the potential impacts.
Understand.
And my biggest concern is, I really don't know what those potential impacts are, because you don't know what those potential impacts are.
And I couldn't sit here and tell you, yes, it's going to be this, or no, it's going to be this. What I can tell you is that what we see in the market and what we do is industrial. What we would like to continue doing is industrial. Do I want to maintain a little flexibility because I just don't know the groups coming through? Yes. Could it be Amazon that comes in and pays a ton of jobs and doesn't use water and has robots so there's no traffic? Could be.
Couldn't you come in for a proffer amendment at that point, though?
What's that?
Couldn't you come for a proffer amendment?
In terms of...
If that did happen?
My concern is the following. I'm not trying to delve or shirk responsibility. It is, every time a project would come up, I would have to do some sort of analysis and figure out, all right, this use now, I'm only left with 600 trips a day. How can I manage a project? So, let's say you get a use that has more traffic at the very beginning, but in the backside of it, there's a warehouse that doesn't use more traffic. I can't... Coming in every single time that I have a potential plan, tenants will not hang around.
That's what Patriots Crossing does.
And I'm... Will defer to their thoughts on that.
All right, thanks. Okay, does anybody have any more questions for the applicant? All right, I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gooj? Okay. Seeing no questions, so I'll...
Madam Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Randall. Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the light industrial uses by right. It's pretty varied. What's the maximum, is it the vocational school at 27 per thousand square feet? Is that the maximum that you see on the M1 by right?
I believe it would be restaurants, which is approximately 127 per thousand for a high turnover restaurant. I T E Code 932.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You know, and it may be an option of being able to say, not necessarily to you, that, you know, maybe we, maybe we limit the number of restaurants. Maybe we're allowed one restaurant, maybe we're allowed no vocational schools. Maybe we proffer some flexibility in the process versus, I don't know what it's going to be, you'll just have to live with whatever it is. You know, maybe there's some flexibility there. I don't want to necessarily tie your hands completely, but I do think there's some flexibility other than, you know, we're just going to go with it. You know, at 500,000 square feet of a vocational school, you're at 13,000 trips per day. You know, at restaurants, you're at 50,000 trips per day, if my math is close. So, absolutely. No, no, that's fine.
And one of those things that, there currently no restaurants there. There probably no hotels there.
Sure.
Do I see there in any short-term or even long-term there being a hotel or potentially restaurant? This isn't Garrisonville Road. It's Centerport Parkway. Looking at other Richmond Airport, other airports, and granted, this is a much smaller scale, we don't have that here. Do I see myself having a situation where you're going to have a restaurant at like TGI Fridays next to Panera, next to, we don't have the demographics in that area to even come close to it. Now, I understand we were making a rezoning and that has to live going forward and who's to say what's going to happen in the future?
Right.
With your aspects with regards to the vocational school as well as restaurants, any traffic would have to be dealt with at site plan. So, you know, if there are concerns about getting inside and outside of the project, we would have to deal with taper lanes, we'd have to deal with turn lanes. I've already proffered that if the site plan requires it, I'll do a turn lane. I'm not trying to shirk responsibility. I just, do I see restaurant after restaurant after restaurant? No, I really don't. But I will kick myself if like, oh, we got two great restaurants that everybody loves and it would make sense. I just, not knowing, and trust me, I, we looked at this project for a long period of time, trying to find a tenant in tow so we could answer all of these questions. It's just, there were several different, and just to make you aware, I also work for CBRE and we're the ones that sold the site to Virginia Linens. We're the ones that sold the site to several other investors and developers in the area. A lot of them were using it for their project, for their own goal, their own business. We tried to get them tied into the site. Every time that we did, your zoning's not right. Why wouldn't I just look next door where the zoning's there? And so, that is part of the reason why, I would love to have a GDP, I would love to have a tenant and say, hey, this is what we're doing, this is how it's going to go. I just, I don't have that at this point in time. Do I think it's going to be something similar? Yes, I do. But at this point in time, I just, I would, I have concerns about proffering out certain uses where if it comes along, I'd like to have the opportunity to try and land it here in Stafford County.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Appicello.
It's kind of a departure from the way we normally do business, but I want to ask Mike to come up because Mike is familiar with some projects that have been proposed in that general vicinity.
And while you're coming up, I have one quick question for you to think about, Mr. Gooj. Are junk yards allowed in M1? Okay.
So, we had a couple of rezoning proposals. I want to say Oak and Wald was one of those that was in close proximity to the airport. How many homes were the original proposal? No, the original proposal, I think, was 600.
Somewhere around there.
Maybe even higher, 700. And, and we've put a circle around the airport and called it the Central Stafford Business District, right?
Right.
So, there's a plan that would have a lot of intensity in that area, right? So, you got a nice piece of, a nice parcel next to the airport that might be a magnet for restaurants, retail. I know that's not included in M1, but there are some uses in M1 that might have intensity in relationship to what we're thinking about occurring in that area over the long haul. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. As the area builds out sometime in the future, there could be enough population to support something like that, yes.
Okay. Sorry to bring you up. I know that wasn't your turn, but I just wanted to bring some context to why I have a concern that this area could build out differently than even the applicant thinks as things change in that area, as we have asked for it to change in that area. Thank you.
Okay. Are we done with the questions? All right. Okay.
It's back on me, right?
It's back in the commission now. So, Mr. English, this is your district. What do you want to do?
I mean, I hear Commissioner Appicello's thing about the traffic, I understand that, but this is taking A1 out of that, putting houses in there, putting M1, and I understand he doesn't know exactly what's going in there. I don't feel like, I can't say, I don't have a crystal ball to say that restaurants know again, not going in there, but I don't foresee it. But I'm going to approve this RC 17151715 for the reclassification of this because I feel like that's what we want in there in industry and not houses. So, that's why I'm approving this.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I have a substitute motion to defer for two weeks to give our staff and our attorney a chance to talk to the applicant, see the extent to which they need to comply with the code as was stated earlier. I don't think a two-week deferral to have that further conversation is a bad thing and it could wind up going into court if we haven't followed our own code requirement. So, I think it's worthwhile to at least explore that as an option.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Appicello. So, right now, we have a substitute motion on the floor for a deferral until the May 9th Planning Commission meeting. Do we have a second? Anybody want a second?
I'll second, Mr. English.
I think, I think procedurally.
I'll second.
Okay. So, we have a second from Mr. Bain on deferral until May 9th. So, Mr. Appicello, would you like to make any comments?
Again, I think legally speaking, despite whatever conversations had between staff and the applicant, the bottom line is, that doesn't supersede a legal requirement. Those requirements have to be met. They're not discretionary, they're mandatory. So, if it hasn't been met, I think it's something that needs to be at least explored because we've had an interpretation and even staff now say that they don't think it's been met. So, just waiting two weeks is not going to change the outcome if I'm wrong. So, I don't see the harm in trying to reconsider whether or not that requirement was met.
Thank you. Mr. Bain?
No comments.
Anyone else want to comment on that motion? Mr. Mufferson?
Madam Chair, I would like to comment on the motion. I do support Commissioner Appicello's motion. I do think that this, the use of this land is absolutely, your proposed use is where we need to go and I do support this. I want it to succeed, but I do agree that we need to make sure that we conform with our own standards and ordinances. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else want to comment? Okay. So, now we're going to take a vote to defer this one meeting to the May 9th meeting. If everybody would take your vote. Okay. The vote turns into 5-2. That passes, so it's deferred until May 9th. And I think, you know, just to the applicants, I think the commission generally supports what you're trying to do in the area. So, just if there's anything you can do to help us out and help Mr. Appicello with his concerns regarding the traffic, you know, determining the traffic impact study analysis from the county code, looking if you're willing to exclude any uses from M1 might be helpful so that we can send this to the board with an approval. All right. Okay. Thank you guys so much for hanging out this evening. Now, we're going to move on to item number seven, the conditional use permit for the 512 convenience store. And I know Mr. Gooj is the staff representing this, but in the interest of time, I'm going to let everybody know that the applicant has requested a deferral until the end of May, which would be the, I think it's May 23rd, but I better check.
Yes.
The May 23rd meeting. And so, I know there is some residents that, or resident in here who's hung out to kind of see how this shakes out. So, I'm happy to have Mr. Gooj go through the presentation. If we don't feel like we can get a consensus on the, on the commission because we do actually have to vote in order to defer this until the end of May. Does the commission think we should hear the staff presentation or would you guys be comfortable voting for a deferral to grant that?
I'm okay with the deferral.
Anybody else, anybody have any objections?
No. If somebody's here to speak on that, would they still be able...
No, because it's not a public hearing. So, they were able to speak in the beginning. And I will tell you that I've, I've actually met with all the residents behind the 512 convenience store and they've given me a list of items that are concerning to them. It's a pretty reasonable list, such as construction hours, changing, moving the pumps to the side, which we heard at the last public hearing, addressing the lights and the fencing are the, are the big ones. And I will say that the applicant has agreed to most of those, but not all of those. I think staff was working out some issues with the sidewalk that they're required to put in based on the county code. There are two outstanding issues, I think, that are currently being looked at. I think the residents have been very concerned about the lighting that was just put in. There are some LED lights and so, we've asked staff to take a look at that and to take a look at the current proffers to determine if we'd need a new proffer statement in the conditional use permit or if that is already in their current proffers and those lights may be a violation in addition to the fencing. So, Mr. Gooj, I don't know, do you want to come up and talk? Have you guys done any research on that and let us at least know where we are with the proffers regarding the fence, what the current ones are and what they're proposing as the new ones? Because I know the applicant's engineer is here, so maybe he could take back to the applicant what our requests are regarding the lights and the fence.
Yes, Madam Chairman. Staff has been notified of the issues with the lighting, the new LED fixtures that were put in. Videos and photos have been sent and staff has been sent out to the site to look at the configuration of that lighting. So, zoning staff is working towards a resolution for the lighting matter. There is a proffer condition on the property which requires all lighting to be directed downward and inward from adjacent uses. So, if they are in fact pointing towards those residents, that would not be in compliance with the proffer conditions.
So, we wouldn't have to expand that into the new proffers. It's a current proffer on the property. So, it sounds like if, after staff identifies it, and I know this gentleman sitting in the audience came up to me and showed me some photographs and his whole yard is lit up at night. I mean, the whole side of the house, I drove over there. So, if staff could take a look at that before we move forward to be able to address those lights. And then the second one was the fence.
Yes. The fencing, there is a, under the current proffers again, there's a proffer that the seven-foot tall board-on-board fence be set internal to the rear property line, although it doesn't get into details about exactly where it would go. Initial interpretation with the zoning administrator would be that that fence needs to extend the entire length of the rear property line, which currently it does not. So, even without this conditional use permit approval, they could be required to extend that fence all the way down to the corner. Currently, what they're proposing on the GDP is retaining much of the existing seven-foot fence and replacing a section of it adjacent to the fuel cells and then extending the seven-foot fence down to the southern corner and then up the side property line.
Okay. And just to reiterate, I guess, in the, in the public, the residents really wanted to see hours of operation, and this is supposed to help the applicant because we want to, we want to get to a good point here, hours of operation on construction, an eight-foot tall fence that actually touches the ground so that debris doesn't blow through and it's eight foot from the ground up and that there is a strong language requiring the owner to maintain the fence when, when or if boards rotten or breaking. And that it is a no-climb board-on-board and it goes all the way in the back of the property and then up along the side, like you just mentioned. And then the, at the site plan, the water mitigation is underground where the current tanks are, the tanks to be relocated to the other side of the property, which I think they've already agreed to. And then fix the lights. If they can get those lights fixed immediately, that would be great because it sounds like they're definitely violating their current proffers and definitely disturbing the neighbors. And the neighbors are generally supportive with those items, caveated. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that, but we can take a vote to defer it. So, I'm hoping that that information really helps the applicant.
You make the motion.
I don't think I can make, well, I'll hand it over to Stephen for a minute.
Ms. Vanuch, this item's in your district. What would you like to do?
I'm going to make a motion to defer the conditional use permit for the 512 convenience store until the May 23rd meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion to defer to the May 23rd meeting. It's been seconded by Mr. English. Any further comment, Ms. Vanuch?
Nope.
Mr. English?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Let's vote.
All right. Motion. Oh, sorry. That's your line.
Motion carries 7-0. Passing it back to you.
Okay. So, that takes care of our unfinished business. Moving into new business, we have none. So, now on the...
Madam Chairman.
Yep.
I would like to move to go into closed session.
All right. We have a movement to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Appicello, second by Mr. Randall.
Madam Chairman, I have a resolution to read. Whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A7 and A8, the commission desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation, legal counsel, and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation or such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the county and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters which require the provision of legal advice by such counsel and whereas such discussions may occur in closed session, now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County Planning Commission on this 25th day of April 2018 does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters in closed meeting.
Okay. So, we have to vote. All right. We have the motion by Mr. Appicello, second by Mr. Randall. Now, we just vote to go into closed session. All right. Motion passes 7-0.
I can barely get through it.
Number 2A.
We have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Appicello, second by Mr. English. Any discussion? All right. Vote. All right. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to the planning director's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As you saw in your packet, on April 17th, the Board of Supervisors referred to the Planning Commission what staff calls as Phase 3 of the Cluster Development Proposal. This allows the Planning Commission up to a year to have a deep dive into the cluster standards. The referral allows the Planning Commission to take a look at all the cluster development standards and the subdivision zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. So, staff will defer to the Planning Commission on how you want to proceed in the future.
And they gave us 12 months, you said?
Up to 12 months, yes.
Up to 12 months. So, one of the things that I was thinking about is, I know that a lot of commissioners are interested in this, that we could maybe have like a kickoff meeting to really look at what the board sent us and identify, do we want to establish a subcommittee from that or do we want to, you know, allow for some public input prior to establishing that subcommittee to really focus on certain issues that are important to the community? So, I was thinking the most effective way to do this is to create a special meeting with the commission to only discuss the cluster Phase 3. That way, we're not taking up time in a regular meeting and it's something that can be separately set aside. Does any member of the commission have an issue with that? Okay. So, I'll work with you guys outside of the meeting to set up a date in the near future that we can get all of the notifications set up for. So, that's how we'll proceed.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Awesome. County Attorney's Report? County Attorney's Report?
I have no report, Madam Chairman.
I have no report, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Alright, committee reports. Uh, Ms. Hornung, I think you're going to review the landscaping standards. Um, everybody should have had this in their packet, they've reviewed it. Maybe we'll just do this as, ask questions of Ms. Hornung if you have any, um, concerns, and then maybe we can move this forward. So does anybody, did everybody read the packet? Does anybody have any concerns, questions for Ms. Hornung? Anything popped out as needed to be addressed? Okay, so then are we comfortable making a motion on this, then? Yeah, do you have anything you?
Excuse me. Well, I know that since we have some new staff on board in the environmental section of the department, they're also looking at the ordinance. There are some things that I actually happened to notice that we didn't specifically address in the committee that's been meeting since last year, but it's the first two pages where it refers to code administration and planning. So we would just clean up some of that language as it refers to departments and the agent who's responsible for enforcing this, which this is referenced in the zoning ordinance. Uh, I do know that the, the landscape subcommittee did recommend some pictures, some graphics of greenery, and, um, staff was mentioning that they wanted to get some nice pictures, but since nothing's been in bloom yet, we don't have those. Uh, but whatever the will of the Planning Commission is, uh, to, um, send some things, or if you, if you want to do like you did with the Parking and Driveout Committee, is have the commission, uh, if they didn't have enough time to look over it and ask questions or have any comments, and then we can incorporate those, whatever the will of the commission is.
Madam Chairman, I thought I heard you say that there's still some staff on the environmental side, still looking at this?
Well, we had some new staff come on board, and so they were looking at the ordinance as well, uh, from the changes that we were doing.
So whatever input they have may, has not, if they have any, has not yet been-
Nothing has come up yet, no.
So how, how much longer do you think it would, it would be for them to make a final chop?
I think probably we would come, we could come back as, with a final document to make sure that we've addressed everything, incorporated everything by the end of May, and allow the Planning Commission some time if, uh, they had other comments as well.
And would that give you enough time to put some pictures in as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that works. Alright, we don't need to vote on that, right? Without, it's just a committee report, we'll have it back at the end of May. Alright, that's it. Um, A1 Uses Subcommittee, Mr. English?
We haven't set another date to meet again on that, so Stephen, uh, maybe get with me and let me know what's good for you. We'll just meet again sometime in May. Okay?
Okay, and Cemetery Ordinance Subcommittee is working on the final report. Um, moving on to the chairman's report, I do not have any report at this time. Other business, TRC is in George Washington and Hartwood District. Um, and then the, the last item you guys will see is something new. Back in, in, I think in January, the commission discussed, um, having committee, um, not minutes, but committee summaries that we could go over if, when we're kind of giving the updates amongst the commission. Um, Dan, I think you did some research, and it's not required that we actually vote to approve these minutes, these are just summaries that the commission can actually utilize, correct?
It is not required to take or vote on the minutes.
Okay, so we don't need to vote, we can just have those, they're, uh, available to you guys. I think you got them from an email and, from Stacy, so please review those, and that way it will hopefully keep everybody more up to speed on what's going on in these subcommittees. Um, and that's it, meeting adjourned.